All right, let's get started. Good evening Placerville, it's good to see you. It is 5:03 and we will call this meeting to order.
Ben your gavel.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. O'Connell, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will, we have nothing under ceremonial matters, item three, we have nothing at this time under closed session report. We are however having a special meeting at seven or directly after this meeting for a closed special item. Number five, adoption of the agenda.
Move we adopt the agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
All right, we have a couple of presentations and we will get started tonight with 6.1, with Mark Acuna from the Placerville Fire Safe Council making an announcement.
Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers and City Department heads. Pleasure to be here. For those that don't know, I'm Mark Acuna and I am with the Placerville Fire Safe Council. I'm here this evening to give you a second update on the upcoming March 19th Placerville Wildfire Awareness Event. With me this evening is our Chair David Zalinski. David was instrumental in the forming of the Fire Safe Council a couple of years ago and has been faithfully carrying it forward to all the struggles that we've all faced with COVID. It's a dedicated group, a lot of super knowledgeable and concerned citizens that are working to try and make Placerville a safer place. So along that, I would like to go ahead and again extend an invitation to the City Council and especially our Mayor to be at the event on March 19th. It opens to the public here in Town Hall at 10 o'clock. It will run from 10 to 3. Again, that's March 19th here at the Town Hall and in the Town Hall parking lot. We have been working very hard and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge one, our event coordinator Barbara Bills, who has been putting in a tremendous effort, working with a number of organizations to bring the, bring this event off. And along that line, let me share again with the Council and the public the number of events that we have worked to put together for this. There'll be three actual presentations during the day. They'll be in the morning and the afternoon. We're going to have the Placerville Police Department and Chief Joe Wren debuting for us the Placerville Evacuation Training. That training will also include the departments displaying the new maps that are going to be part of this training effort. And they are also going to be displaying their new incident command vehicle. Something that is now an intricate part of on the street every day of Placerville Police Department. This allows them to be an intricate part of any major fire such as the Caldoor and have instant communication with all of the various agencies. So this is a big step up and I know Fire Safe Council is honored to have Placerville PDB be part of that event. Also during the morning and afternoon, we're going to have a presentation from the Eldorado County Fire District. Chief Cordero has been very gracious in supplying his staff and we'll have a fire unit on display all day. Various fire personnel here to discuss what's going on and we'll also have an update from them on home hardening in the wildfire season that now seems to be year-round. Lastly, we'll also have a live demonstration from our amateur radio club. They are a very interesting group and they have come up with ways that actually allow us to be in communication when our cell system overloads and drops out. Old technology is suddenly now very important and they will be demonstrating that technology morning and afternoon to show how in a power outage or a big loss of cell service, how they have equipment that we can all have in our homes that will allow us to communicate locally and regionally. So those are our presentations. Organizations that are going to be involved, again, we'll have the Native Plant Society set up outside. We'll have the Firewise Community, we'll have Firewise Community Educational Information. I already mentioned the Eldorado County Fire District. U.S. Forest Service will be here and they will have a guest of honor, Smokey the Bear. Smokey will be here all day in the building and outside in the parking lot. Along with Forest Service, we will also have a good representation from CAL FIRE and we will have their new fire mascot, Captain Cal. And if those of you didn't know, and I didn't know, Captain Cal is a mountain lion and he does get along with Smokey the Bear. So those two will be here to entertain our kids and they will have courtesy of both Forest Service and CAL FIRE. We are going to have a kids games and presentations. We'll have color cranes and Smokey the Bear coloring books. We will also have interaction with both of those agencies and any kids that want to come down. So to also make it desirable to get you down here, we were so gracious to receive support from Placerville Rotary. Placerville Rotary will be set up out in the parking lot and they will be providing a basic hot dog stand service throughout the event. So we're very grateful for their participation in this. Let me make sure I haven't forgotten anybody. PG&E, EID, and our water agency will also be here and they will be sharing with us the improvements that they've made to their systems to ensure we have adequate water supplies and of course PG&E and their ongoing effort to trim every tree in town. I think they'll be giving us some updates on that. And so with that, I think I have about covered everything. Again, appreciate all of the city staff that has been working with us on various requests. We appreciate the efforts that they've put in and of course the chiefs of all these various agencies have been very supportive. So we look forward to having a tremendous turnout. Patty Borelli has been our council member advocate and we certainly appreciate the extra meetings that she has sat through with us to give us her guidance. Her most recent suggestion was we were trying to figure out shooting for attendance numbers and she encouraged just up to 250, so.
No, 200.
200, okay. Make a note of that, it's on the record. Anyway, thank you all very much and please think about coming, it'll be a great day. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Thank you Mark and David for this presentation and.
Mr. Zalinski?
Sure.
Because I can't resist a microphone. So a couple more. So Jackie, if I give a shout out to, she invited one of her neighbors to give me a call and it was great. So we're going to also have Tribal Fire and the goal is to try and get elders to have hopefully some free work done on their property. Now if you have 14 Mercedes in the front yard, they may not choose to do your property. So hide them in the back before they, anyway, so Tribal Fire should also be there. And also Mark Egbert from RCD who hopefully will tell us all kinds of wonderful news about our getting a shaded fuel break. And Ernie Laurie who works with veterans and seniors and Kathy Lishman with Friends of Seniors should be there. So if your neighbor, I told your neighbor Jackie, to go make sure you talk to Ernie Laurie and get in line with him and talk to Tribal Fire and then let them be confused as they talk to each other and eventually we should get her all taken care of. That's my contribution adding to the confusion. Thank you.
Oh, Mark's doing.
One last thing, in all of these agencies, I forgot to remind everybody that the Placerville Fire Safe Council and the El Dorado County Fire Safe Council will be doing home hardening presentations throughout the day. So with that, we thank you very much and look forward to seeing all of you on the 19th.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for pulling together all these community partners for this really important event. I look forward to being there on the 19th. Are there any comments or questions from the Council?
I just want to reiterate what you just said, that these, this commission has just been really working hard and hats off to them and I just hope everybody makes an effort to come out and support them. And really, they're bringing a lot of knowledge, a lot and a lot of answers to questions that I think we all have, so. Thank you.
Thank you Patty.
I just want to acknowledge that they, you know, once again, we have people from our community that are stepping up as volunteers to support our community, to help our community thrive, to, you know, there's so many people that show up in so many different ways to kind of make us a whole community. And with this new challenge we have with, it's not a new one, but it's, but we're finding new ways to address it and new people are showing up and I just want to once again express my appreciation for our community volunteers. Thank you.
We'll see all 250 of you then.
I just had one question actually, Mark. If I could have you put on your other hat for the city, which is your liaison, our energy liaison. I just was wondering if you had any new information you could share with the community regarding the undergrounding that PG&E has talked about doing in Placerville. I know there's some undergrounding along Missouri Flat, which is not in the city limits, but I didn't know if you had any other information regarding any type of undergrounding in, within the city or if those discussions have even been had.
Thank you for the question Vice Mayor Saragosa. That's a white hat I think I put on for this one. Excuse me. Interestingly enough, Cleve and I have our quarterly meeting scheduled with Brandon Sanders tomorrow with who is the PG&E Government Relations Coordinator for El Dorado and Placerville Counties. There has been some interest in, some information on some Missouri Flat road undergrounding and the idea that that somehow was credited to wildfire mitigation. And I would credit that to a road widening project that has been in the works for decades. So to suggest, and I think there was a mild suggestion PG&E's part that this is going to help as part of that effort and not from my engineering background, it doesn't. As far as here in Placerville, that is one of the questions we do have to Brandon and we hope to get that information tomorrow. There's still a number of questions that I have that remain unanswered and is significantly to the cost of undergrounding to the individual customer along these selected routes. So far, the information has been not forthcoming as to who shares the traditional costs, which are significant to the individual property owners. So that needs to be clearly vetted. But I look forward to perhaps in about two or three weeks, bringing a update to the Council on all of these issues that we are dealing with, with PG&E and wildfire safety.
Thank you Mark and David, thank you as well. Look forward to seeing you guys on the 19th and having my hot dog and talking to the folks around. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate that thank you to Mark for your multiple hats and David and all the agencies involved in this big event on the 19th, we look forward to it. Thank you. All right, well, thanks again for that presentation. The next item is a presentation from EDOC COC. This is a time certain item for 5:30, so we're going to, we're going to keep going down the agenda and come back around to that. So that brings us to 6.3, brief comments by the Council. And let's start with Jackie. Will you just brief comments, that's 6.3, and try to squeeze that in. All right, Michael.
No comments from you this one. I'll wait for my, for the, our other reports.
Dennis?
It's been a quiet week, which is much appreciated at this time, but no, so I have nothing to report out right now.
I have the same report.
Okay, well, I've got a couple, a couple of quick things. First, I want to thank Public Works and the volunteers that helped clean up that camp on Lower Main Street last week. Really appreciate that. And I attended with several of my colleagues here and a lot of the Board of Supervisors, the Big Brothers, Big Sister grand opening on Main Street. It was a great event and we are just thrilled to have them on Main Street. It's a great organization. I attended the El Dorado Unified High School, High School District Safety Meeting that same day and I think that is all my comments for you now. So we will move on to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, if I can make a point of order, could we maybe move to item 13, to the Council reports from other agencies?
Sure.
I don't know if we need a motion for that or can we just move ahead?
What did you want?
I was just saying just move, if we move to Agency Reports.
Before the consent calendar?
Before the consent calendar, yeah, just so we.
I'm fine with that Mona, are we okay?
If we can just make a motion only because we did the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we move up item 13 to right after item 6, Agency Meeting Reports.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
All right, so El Dorado County Transit Authority.
We received and filed the proposed 2223 budget.
All right. El Dorado County Transportation Commission.
I'm going to do it. It was, it was a great meeting, I thought. Very, very lengthy and I brought the Director's Report just to, and I'm not going to go over the whole thing since we're short on time tonight, but I just wanted to show the people what El Dorado Transportation Commission does. It's three pages full and then the thing that I really look forward to is this, they call it project monitoring and it's a booklet that they, they, they talk about all their projects and where they are, the project itself and how far they progressed with it. It's just great and I really would encourage folks to go on to their website. It's very interesting. You really learn a lot about what goes on in our city and our county and what these folks go through to get the roads and everything that we're clamoring for and what they go through to get it. With, along with our Rebecca Neves who assists in a lot of the decisions that are made, so. And I don't think there's anything outstanding, just as a progress report of everything that's going on. The Camino Project, the, you know, the, what do they call it, green? Trip to Green, thank you. And ongoing and also funding that they have applied for and received, so. That's it.
That document is a really great summary of everything that's happening.
It is, I love it.
If anyone's interested in, you know, when this road is going to get fixed or what's happening with this road is just, you know, one place that you can go to get a ton of information. All right, that brings us to LAFCO.
LAFCO, we adopted the proposed 2223 budget and also we hired an Assistant Policy Analyst, Shiva Frenzen, which is starting to staff back LAFCO, so yay.
All right, that's good, they need that. And Pioneer Community Energy Board.
We have not, we, sure. I was just handed this document that we received just, just this afternoon. PG&E and Pioneer Energy will be holding a meeting for customers that have, the customers have the choice regarding the best rate for them and that deadline is coming up, it's March 18th. And so they're going to be, it's called time of use and so they will be having a meeting on March 15th. Let's see, Pioneer Community Station, Presentation for Usage, March 15th. You didn't underline anything else on here. Okay, the webinar, okay. Time of Use Rate Plans and Making the Right Choice Can Be Challenging. So Pioneer Community Energy teamed with PG&E to provide a time of use webinar on March 15th from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM via Zoom.
March, say it again, March 15th?
March 15th from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM via Zoom. This presentation is open to everyone and all are encouraged to attend. Visit Pioneer Energy's event page at their website, pioneercommunityenergy.ca.gov for more information or you can RSVP at Pioneer's Facebook page. So either way, they have a great, I'm sure it's a good presentation. I've seen their presentation on time of use and be very helpful in helping you make decisions on your, which route to go. Whether you have Pioneer Energy or PG&E, it's an important thing to recognize and take a look at.
Just quickly, that email was put up on our website and Facebook today too. So if you didn't get it all written down and didn't get all that, you can go to our website to get the information.
I'll just add on that, just previously seen on it, if you have solar or thinking about getting solar, definitely give Pioneer a call because they can run you through the numbers. It's a little bit more complicated in terms of switching over when you have solar and depending on what type of solar you have leased or if you own it. And so definitely give them a call if you're in that position and they'll walk you through it. They're actually are really good about it. I have to do that myself, but they have been really good with customers that have called it on that.
Absolutely. And if you do that, if you come prepared with 12 months of your billing, it'll help. Either emailing it to them or having it ready, readily available, it'll help you do that comparison.
Well, I'm glad to hear about this time of use thing because I'm totally confused and I'm very interested to find out what it's all about.
And whether you attend the webinar or not, the deadline to make a choice on your time of use level is March 18th. So just to put that out there. Dennis, thank you for making that announcement. I knew I was forgetting something at the end of my public council member comments and.
You're welcome.
And I just threw that on you, so thanks a lot. All right, we've got a couple minutes left, so I think we will go on to the consent calendar, which is usually pretty quick. Oh, no, there's been no, there's been no, oh, other page. Fire Safe Council?
We got the report already.
Yep. And there's been no two by two and we're going to hear from Opportunity Knox.
Just real quickly on SAICOG, we did have a meeting, Land Use Committee meeting, which was really to do, provide the authority to do the initial implementation for Agreements Go Funds, about 3.4 million that will be allocated to SAICOG so that they can stand up the program to disperse the rest of the 34 million or so later in about October. So excited to see that stand up and I think Placerville will be in a good position hopefully to compete for those funds as well.
Thanks. So that brings us to item 7, the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the Council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless the Council member requests otherwise. At this time, I will open the Consent Calendar up for public comment if anyone would like to make a comment on it. This is item 7, 7.1 through 7.6. All right, seeing, Sue, did you want to make a comment?
I really like the idea of putting some of these things that are pretty much standard into the Consent Calendar. The contract change orders and the notices of completion, I think, do very well here to let people know this is what's going on, we're making progress and I think they're great, so.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other comments on consent, I'll bring it back to the Council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
We have a first and a second, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
All right, we have about five minutes before 5:30. I don't think that that is enough time to take item 15.3, so let's just take a, take a five-minute break.
Yeah, let's take a brief break and get them set up with their presentation and then we can go ahead and start.
All right, so we are, we're on break, we will be back at 5:30. All right, so at this point, we are at item 6.2. This is to receive a presentation from El Dorado Opportunity Knox, Continuum of Care Regarding the El Dorado County Homeless Strategic Plan. And I'd like to welcome Margaret Lewis with EDOC COC to give this presentation to the Council and the public.
Thank you Mayor and thank you for having me, Councilmembers and City Leaders. Not only me, but also Dr. Marchant Entwistle from Marshall, Don Simone from HHSA and Daniel Delmonte from HHSA. We'll be presenting together tonight collectively building the community plan to prevent and end homelessness in El Dorado County. On our agenda, our hope is that you either had the opportunity to see the Board of Supervisors' presentation, which was much more lengthy and in-depth, and/or to have had an opportunity to get the document down from EDOC's webpage and to take a look at it. When I talk about the document, I'm referring to the plan. But I say that because tonight with 20 minutes, what we're going to do is really focus on a brief overview of the strategic plan and focus more a little bit on implementation steps and where that will head. So we'll be looking at that and then of course afterwards receiving immediate initial feedback as well as questions. Finally, at the request of two of our jurisdictions, we did extend the time for public comment until March 22nd. So you can find a feedback form either online at edoccoc.org or contact me and I'll be happy to get you one on paper. With that, I want to add the caveat that while we have extended the time for public comment, we are not stopping the implementation of the strategic plan. As many of you know, this plan has been on hold because of all of the things we needed to deal with in terms of COVID and the situation surrounding the unhoused and not spreading COVID into our community. And so that took precedence and then the Caldoor Fire took precedence and we now know that we are quickly moving up upon the next fire season. However, with that caveat, I would also go on to say that a plan is just that, not unlike a roadmap, right? We've all used Google or MapQuest or Waze and you have an intention of where you're going and you get on that road and you go that direction and something happens and you're successful and get there timely or something else may happen and cause need for resituating the situation and finding new pathways. So I say that because I want you to know that public comment that continues to come in will be read, will be considered, will be valued even as we move forward because we will be utilizing that to inform where we're headed. So where we've come from in that time since we started in 2019 through today, and you can see all the detail of this in the plan, but we've held over 10 focus groups and then worked also with individuals doing interviewing. We've held various community meetings. We received over 250 surveys, both in Spanish and in English, and then we've held issue summits. And this all happened over a period, like I said, of the two years, two and a half years now that we've been working on this. We looked at our data, doing significant data analysis, both the county as our administrative entity as well as Homebase, who is our consultant, looking at both point in time and HIC counts as well as our database of information that comes in through folks who do referral for homeless services. And then of course just looking at our systems performance measures as well as the US Census Bureau. We came up with a strategic plan, you've seen it, I hope. And so that draft plan is at hand. We are now receiving stakeholder feedback, as I said, and then we will be finalizing the plan and beginning implementation. Ultimately, the reason we're doing this is because we hold a vision at EDOC COC, community members coming together, and our vision is that all individuals and families in El Dorado County will have equal access to community resources and safe and affordable housing. And the way we're going to get to that vision is through our mission, which is to collaboratively identify and address social vulnerabilities, reduce the inflow of folks experiencing homelessness, increase prevention and build a robust emergency response system to accomplish the functional end of homelessness in this county. I'm going to ask Dr. Entwistle now to come forward and talk to you a little bit about our goals.
Good evening Mayor, Councilmembers, leaders. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. The plan has got four main goals to it. The ultimate goal is to end homelessness. Prevent it before it begins is goal number one. That's really important. Call out for you all, I think many of you will be familiar, but the individuals that we see in the street, on the highways and byways, and the individuals that generally come into the point of time count last time out, remember we've just completed it, roughly 650 individuals is only part of the issue. Many of the people that we're referring to in. Many of the people that we're referring to in preventing homelessness before it begins could be your neighbor. It's that individual who's just managing to make ends meet, who's living in an RV or staying with a friend, moving around. Working to prevent those individuals flipping the wrong side of that knife edge that they're on and getting into true homelessness is one of the key goals because otherwise we're just filling the hopper with more individuals coming in. So we need to do that. We need access to not just housing, but other attributes of how we keep people employed, how we can support them to be at their schools, and from my point of view, how we provide healthcare, I'll come back to that in a minute. We need an emergency response, so how do we handle the individuals that do flip the wrong side of that knife edge? So Marshall spends a lot of its time with those folk. They're the folk that come to the emergency department repeatedly because that's where they access the healthcare, may get admitted to the hospital, and then we discharge them. We have to try and manage them. How do we keep them from just going revolving around the turnstile? So we need to put in place services that outreach, and those of you who are aware will know of the vulnerable population outreach program that Marshall put in place on the back of COVID. Working with a lot of partners, which comes to the last goal, we have to work in partnership with yourselves, with fire department, with law enforcement, public health, we all have to work on this together. We already are doing some pretty good work. We have quite a long way to go. We've demonstrated, for example, how working with the libraries and using those as an access point for individuals at risk of homelessness to get information, to get access to healthcare services, taking the services to where those folk can engage with us rather than expecting them to engage with us in a traditional sense. So all four goals are important. I want to call out that many of these are already underway. It's not a green fields. It's not like we're starting from nothing. This county actually has quite a lot of experience of us working on this and in some areas working successfully. So we want to build on that. We want, we're asking for your assistance to do that, your support. There's a lot of willing participants within the community, there's a lot of experience, there's funding available, but we want to move forwards with this particularly to prevent people getting into homelessness and improving our coordination of the services that we can provide, but we can't do it alone. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Daniel Delmonte with Health and Human Services with the county, and I'm filling in for our consultant who couldn't be available due to the technological stuff, they live out of the county, so. So on this slide, this slide probably looks familiar to some of you, especially those that watched the board meeting or who've been on the COC, but...
Daniel, sorry, could you raise the microphone up a little bit? Thank you.
There we go. So this slide shows you sort of a high-level diagram of a system response to homelessness. Starting on the left side with the coordinated entry square, that's really the intake countywide into COC programs. The federal government requires that COCs have this intake process and depending on if they need, the individual would need a shelter bed that night or not, they sort of go through that flow chart accordingly into the right programs. And so I'll stop there because we go into more detail in the Board of Supervisors meeting, that video can be watched. But I did want to highlight that this, this stuff that you see are what the COC is tasked with developing. Congress in 2009 created through the HERF Act the law that establishes COC responsibilities. So that's why when you see this plan and you see everything from homeless prevention or diversion to emergency beds to permanent housing, this is the stuff that the federal government requires COCs to do. So they don't have autonomy to say, we only want to do X or we only want to focus here. And each year through our local database, reports are provided to HUD with these outcomes and they make sure that we're targeting all these different program types and really creating this entire system response. So the state also holds these requirements, hence this plan covering all of these components. You may be aware that the Board of Supervisors this morning approved a letter to the COC that gives the COC their priorities and kind of what they see as the most important areas of the plan, and they specifically called out emergency beds. And rightfully so, being one of four counties in the state of California without a year-round low-barrier emergency bed for the general homeless population, and not having that, you know, puts us in a tough situation, not only for helping folks, but also for complying with Martin v. Boise, as I'm sure all of you have heard and are familiar with. I've also heard comments from, from city representatives around the city's likely interest as well in emergency beds as being a priority. So that's exciting because that's also what we're hearing from community members and the entire pot of funding that currently sits with the COC as well as the county and our grant allocations is first and foremost being considered for emergency beds. So I kind of want to emphasize that that is a big priority while also the COC is federally tasked with developing these other components, so. I'm used to saying next slide, but I don't have to say that this evening. So on this slide, you see some, some key facts from the planet and sort of some counterfacts. So from a high level, the top-left square, you see that from the point in time count, which is a biannual homeless census that occurs, there were 613 people experiencing homelessness in 2019, and on the bottom of that, we have 18 units of permanent supportive housing available countywide. Clearly, that's a problem. There's a big gap there. And, and just for context, permanent supportive housing is a program that would serve somebody who has a disabling condition that prevents them from retaining housing without the proper supportive services. So in other words, they need supportive services indefinitely to retain the housing. So only a certain percentage of folks would be, this would be applicable to, but for folks that require that care, we don't have it. And likely, a lot of folks in encampments or who've been outside long-term are teetering on the verge or are in that category that they would need this level of service. Next to that, you see that 78% of the 613 folks were unsheltered, and under that, of course, the stat I referenced, that we don't have a year-round bed for just the general population. We do an emergency bed. We do have shelter beds for youth, for domestic violence victims, which is fantastic, and there's a big need here, obviously. And to the right of that, you see that 90% of extremely low-income households in the county are severely cost-burdened, which means that they spend more than half of their income on rent and a very low vacancy rate on the bottom. So just some kind of comparison data from a high level. Next slide, and the big reason why we're here. So implementation plan. In March, we're about to kick off the implementation planning process, so it's going to focus on the first year. And it really starts with bringing together, there's going to be a meeting called together and we'll, the COC is going to consider who needs to be at the table. And it really comes down to the three Ms. Who has money, manpower, and materials that are applicable to the goals that are identified in the first-year plan or the first-year phase of the plan? So when that group comes together, they're going to be looking at what type of structure do we need? So for example, there may be that overarching committee, maybe it's filled with department staff from the county, from cities, service providers, hospitals, et cetera, and you have sort of project types under it. Emergency beds has a subcommittee. Who has materials, manpower, and money for that effort? And you go sort of line by line and create those subcommittees per each project type that's, that's identified on the first year of the plan. And so again, that's rolling out this month in March. So here's a little bit more detail on that. So once that group comes together, they're going to look at the, the draft goals for the first year, and they're going to discuss and reach consensus on which of these are achievable this year, which of these are the lowest-hanging fruit. What do we have funding for now? And really, therefore, prioritizing what we can, what we should focus on first and foremost. From there, we'll identify responsible leads for each priority area. So for example, as you're likely aware, the Board of Supervisors directed Health and Human Services to work with the COC from November 9th board meeting to look at options and sites for a navigation center or a tiny home community type of a project. So I would imagine for, for that level of a goal, maybe Health and Human Services is likely to be the lead on that. But regardless, if it's safe parking, whatever the goal is for year one, we'll establish the right lead to sort of facilitate that process. From there, those committees will, will be established and, and they'll be able to move forward and report up to that larger sort of implementation committee. Next, in the evaluate resources and priorities section, they'll map out year one by quarters and priorities. Again, what do we have funding for? What are we going to target first and why? So that'll really be the quarter-by-quarter sort of action steps that are developed from that group. And then it's about implementing, convening the committees, and initiating the action steps based on those three Ms. I mentioned. What are the next steps? And from that, we have, our consultant, Homebase, is in contract with the county and the COC to develop an implementation plan for the first year, so, so that it'll be action steps, who's responsible, quarter-by-quarter sort of priorities, et cetera. So it's really something that we can hold and have some accountability to all the parties that are involved in the process. So these are the year-one priorities from a high level. Again, in the presentation that was provided to the Board of Supervisors, we went into more detail in all of these categories, but this summarizes the sample year-one priorities. And the reason that they're, again, sort of sample is the plan's still in draft form. We're waiting for feedback. The, the draft of the, the goals and the tasks were developed from those surveys, those issue summits, the engagement process, and so through this final step, we'll get more feedback. And that maybe shuffles some of this, but this is very close to what it will likely be based on all the information that's been received thus far and that's been incorporated into the plan.
So I get the last three and a half minutes. I'm super excited because now I can take a breath and get real about this. One of the things I want to point out is, as Daniel said, those were sample priorities, and this, too, is a sample rollout and how a rollout might look for any one of those priorities. And then if you look at the plan, if you've had the opportunity to see it, you'll see that there is subsection after subsection and under each subsection, subsection under subsection because there are multiple steps to each priority. So what we've done here is to just choose one of our emergency response priorities, which could be something like safe parking. And safe parking, in this case, you'll see that it's been broken down into three steps, that the responsible parties have been broken down. None of these people have committed yet. This is what the COC and the members looked at and said, this makes the most sense. This would be who we would see leading this particular step. People who want to be involved will be welcomed into that process. People who have ideas about how that process will be welcome to just join in the meetings. So there'll be leadership and then there'll be committees. I chose, I actually asked our consultant to change what she had originally chosen to move it to this because one of the stories that I often share about my work, I work, as I, I think I shared that I'm also the homeless youth coordinator for El Dorado County Office of Ad. And in that work, I work with what we often refer to as the hidden homeless. And we call them the hidden homeless because they're very often single parents who live in vehicles and hide, and they hide for a variety of reasons, most of which we can guess, whether it's stigma or fear, and the fear is of multiple different things. But I have one student in particular whose story I share, and I'll first say that this is kind of an amalgamation, and it's because I can't, of course, give away a private information on a student. But this child lives with her mother in a car. Her mother has a full-time job. The child and the mother attend the mother's work together in the morning. They split off. The child takes the public bus to school before anybody can see them together, and then she hides out at mom's work until mom gets off so that they can be together again. The problem this child faces more than anything else, and this is the hardest thing to be able to say, there's no housing for you. She's 14 years old. They live in a Corolla. Midnight hits. She's finally asleep because she's been trying to do her homework or they've been in the dark or whatever happens. Midnight hits and you're a 14-year-old girl and nature calls. She has a couple of options. She can go outside of the car. She's going to wake her mom, and it's a little terrifying in the dark, in the woods, hidden. She can wait until morning, which is what she generally opts to do. Or she can wake her mom up and ask her to drive her to the local 24-hour gas station, but that gas station does require that she spend money and buy something in order to use the restroom. This is a 14-year-old freshman in high school we're talking about who is a local child. So I just, I share that with you only because I think at some point, if we don't personalize this beyond what we see each day-to-day, but if we don't talk to people, have relationships, understand their individual stories, that it's really hard to embrace a plan for how we're going to move through all these steps. So I just wanted to give you that little bit of an idea about what, what safe parking could look like, and that's why I chose to ask for it as the sample. But this is what each sample would look like for each subset of each subset of each priority. So what does it look like going forward? After today, we're going to wait for that public comment to close. In the meantime, we will be starting, as I said, on some of these things. I hope that you heard at the Board of Supervisors meeting, somebody said, well, we can't do all of this at once. And while that's true, we can begin multiple steps at once. While we're looking for the property, for instance, to do the Nav Center pallet temporary housing emergency, we can be doing safe parking. And while we're looking for that, we can be talking to landlords, so it can be happening kind of cohesively while not simultaneously certainly at least aligned. So we'll be taking that public comment, we'll be implementing it, and then we'll be revising the plan again. And then that's where we'll come back to that slide that both Daniel and I showed. That's when we'll be setting down the priorities, breaking them down quarter-by-quarter, and then giving action steps to each and identifying leadership. Any questions?
Well, first, I'd like to thank you for the presentation and to thank Daniel and Martin, who also spoke. Questions from the council?
I had a question. I didn't see anything about inpatient detox and treatment programs. Are those going to be part of the plan at all?
Are you saying inpatient?
Yes.
So I would suggest that that would go over to Martin to speak to, being in the medical field. Certainly outpatient I can speak to, but...
Yes, obviously a really important area because for many of these individuals, they have multiple aspects to their health and welfare needs, whether it's a chronic condition, substance use, behavioral health. Ideally, we want to conduct as many of these in the outpatient setting and, and manage people there. Of course, in some ways, if they end up as an inpatient, then there's a crisis that we probably could have avoided. We do face that a lot. Those of you who are familiar with the emergency department, any day of the week, we have quite a number of people in that category in the emergency department, and it's really suboptimal care. People are being looked after. We're not a psychiatric facility at Marshall, so we can't strictly hold them under the regulations called a 5150. We work closely with the behavioral health from the county on crisis management, but this is a whole area that we could improve on a lot. I could tell you some stories, in fact, I was talking with Dennis earlier, about how we can manage better by being able to get medications out to the individuals that need them. So resupply medications for those who are under management is one of the challenges. People who can't get to the pharmacy, they can't get to their doctor. That's part of what we do with our outreach program. So we can do a lot more if we can coordinate outreach, meet people where they're at, and one of those is back to the housing. Why is that important? Because that's how we know where we can find them. All of us spend a lot of time following people around the community, the highways and byways, in order to try and keep them within a program of care. If we can provide better facilities, this comes back to why a navigation center is important. Helping people to go to places that are appropriate for them, where they can actually meet, will help us a lot in address many of these issues. Hopefully, that answered your question, it was long-winded.
It was. I mean, I'm looking at the percentage of substance abuse that we have among the homeless and it, I mean, there are lots of substance abuse facilities that people go to and it just doesn't seem like we have any or we're not planning for any, and I guess I just don't understand that.
Well, I don't know that that's actually true because Marshall runs a CARES clinic, which is focused on substance use. We've got a pretty robust program for substance use navigation for those in the emergency department. The tribal health welfare runs a program, as does El Dorado Community Health Center. But some of the challenges are if we have an individual experiencing homelessness and say, can you turn up to the CARES clinic at 2:00 tomorrow afternoon? When they're facing all these other challenges, they aren't necessarily the best individuals to be able to manage that. So that's why we need to think about how we might take care in an appropriate manner to an appropriate setting, not rely on expecting people to come to traditional settings. That's an expectation they can't necessarily meet because of that, they fall through the gaps.
But if you had an inpatient setting, then they wouldn't be having to make appointments because they'd already be there.
Well, not to get into a clinical debate...
I'm just wondering, it just doesn't make sense to me.
But inpatient care isn't necessarily the most appropriate for people. We want to manage them in their normal setting, their normal social environment to the extent you can. An inpatient setting is not always the best for people.
Martin, I had a follow-up on that, and I...
If I could just add one, one quick comment as well as that. So in terms of, you know, inpatient treatment or just, let's say, you know, detox, drug treatment, alcohol treatment, et cetera, that would be incorporated in a navigation center concept because it's essentially what folks need to navigate to permanent placement. And so as a piece of that, it would be anything they need, whether it's ID, job training, social services, detox, drug... social services, detox, drug treatment, et cetera. So linkage to that would be incorporated into a navigation center concept. Also, in any of the programs like permanent supportive housing I mentioned, again, those are supportive services intensive, case management intensive, to meet the person's needs to retain housing. So if it's that they need treatment, then that would be made available and a linkage would be made to that per each program that's developed. And so, you know, providers that apply through a request for proposal to the COC to implement those programs, that's one example of a service that'd be linked to it, as well as other services to help folks retain housing. So while it may not be called out on its own, it's incorporated into these service model types that you see throughout the plan. So I'd be happy to chat offline more about that as well if that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Couple of questions, probably going to be answers from everybody that's here. But the first one, I know in the presentation, they had mentioned about really trying to get people out of the emergency rooms, which I fully agree with. It's more expensive. It's the worst place to actually get primary care, obviously. But now that, I would assume everybody is eligible for Medi-Cal that comes through the emergency doors. I mean, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. Why can't we, when they come in for that, link them to FQHCs to be able to get them their primary care at that point, so that we actually do have a location for them to go that isn't into the emergency room? I know they can just show up, but just wondering if there's a mechanism to get them into the FQs or into any other community clinics or into Medi-Cal, into the actual Medi-Cal providers so that they actually can get the services that they need? So that was my first question.
If I can answer that. So what we find is, in fact, you're correct, that a greater number of people who might imagine experiencing homelessness are eligible for insurance, but they haven't necessarily got it set up and connected. Give you a few stories. So that's one of our jobs, and we do that in the emergency department, to reconnect them. They may be covered by veterans, might be covered by Medi-Cal, or it might be a combination or other programs that can provide some insurance cover. But that's quite a mission to get that organized. Getting people to the appointments, it's the same comment I made before, because you can take a horse to water, but they won't necessarily drink. And that's the case because the folk we're talking about are experiencing so many other social challenges, just in terms of having their day go round. To expect them to make, to meet an appointment is quite a challenge for many. And that's why we have to be creative. And again, back to why a navigation center or the use of the library hubs as a place where there's some flexibility that they might be able to turn up without an appointment and still get care. Sweeping people into a network that gets them away from just consuming health care in an acute situation in the emergency department, which is not really designed to do.
I mean, do we, is there a partnership with the FQs or anybody else so that the intake isn't following, isn't falling on practitioners, but actually that there's, you know, there's somebody embedded within the emergency room from Medi-Cal that can actually get them re-enrolled or enrolled if that's the case?
We do have an individual for Medi-Cal at the hospital to do that job. They aren't necessarily there 24/7, and, you know, for many of the folk, they're turning up at night. So we have creative ways to do that. You touched on an important point, but I'm not sure it's the most important one because at the end of the day, it's then getting them to the service, to getting them in front of someone that can actually assist them with the issues that they're facing is probably the bigger challenge. And that's part of our outreach program, to follow and connect, a continuum of care, if you will, to put a safety net in place, wrap around so people don't fall through the gaps.
Got you. Thank you.
It's a great question. So I would just add that, you know, when folks are in a crisis, as Martin mentioned, they're dealing with, you know, what am I going to eat today? Where am I going to sleep that's safe? Among other personal challenges unique to them. So this is where the value of a navigation center comes into play. You have a place where people are residing. You have case managers there and folks who are making these linkages. You have some transportation plans to get folks to their appointments. You know, being one of four counties without that bed, you know, you're looking at Maslow's hierarchy of need and the bottom shelter not being met. And so without that, there may be some folks that are able to manage all of their needs and also get to a place and make an appointment, et cetera. But if, you know, if their phone got stolen, if things get stolen, it's just a chaotic situation that's unique per person. Where having that stable sort of facility or several of them that supports these folks would allow us to get more folks connected. The other sort of comment I'd make is, this is the value of coordinated entry as an intake process. Before coordinated entry, really service providers served individuals on a first-come, first-served basis. You know, who knows, who knows who does what? And I can make the referral, the slick social worker who understands all the connections in the community. But, you know, serving first-come, first-served really positions the system to serve those who are able-bodied, able-minded, and having the most connections. It leaves behind the folks that have been outside the longest, that have the most intense needs, and that are the highest cost of the hospitals, city, counties, et cetera. So that's where the federal government required that COCs implement coordinated entry, so that you instead triage, just like a hospital. You serve the person who has the highest needs, who's most likely to pass away because of, you know, their health condition, their medical, all the conditions that they're experiencing. So it kind of flips that on its head. And now you're prioritizing the local navigation center beds, these resources for those highest costs, hardest-to-serve folks. That also addresses Martin v. Boise. So it kind of encapsulates all of that. So that's the value of the Nav Center concept plus coordinated entry and how it can address some of those needs you mentioned.
Thank you. Next question is, does EDOC have staff?
Well. I just speak to that. EDOC is made up of a volunteer board.
Right. And I'm on the board, so I understand that.
Okay. But even before that, EDOC is not a single entity, and I think we really tried to drive that home at the BOs meeting. EDOC is made up of our jurisdictions. You are EDOC, all of you. The board is EDOC.
Not really, but.
Well, really, because we're here.
We don't have the statutory power, so I wouldn't say that that was actually factual. But go ahead.
So we do, so we do take input from all community members, and whether they're on the board or not, are welcome to attend. We do have, we do pay for our consultant. HHSA is our, excuse me, is it Public Housing now? Public Housing is our administrative entity. So they are paid to do the work of the administrative entity. Those are the only two paid entities, correct?
Yes.
And I guess my, here's where my question comes to is, so, because everything here is hugely important, getting the navigation center, creating the linkages. But I know, I mean, I've come out of government, high-level government, and so, you know, you have, there's who's in charge, in other words. So who's the staff member? Who's the person that drives it? Who ultimately is the one that has to make sure that the trains run on time and that all these different groups actually work together? I'm just trying to get to who's actually in charge. I know people have statutory, you know, requirements. I mean, COC was created federally, and there's a funding mechanism there. It sounds like the county actually helps drive it, but Daniel, Dawn, you guys have day jobs as well, so your job isn't to just work for EDOC. So I'm just trying to figure out who actually is the person in charge? Or is there not actually a point-of-contact person?
So the board of COCs is prescribed by HUD on who, you have to have a seat representing very specific entities in that service area. It's that board that's responsible for developing the policies and the direction of the COC, making sure that the checklist that HUD prescribes is met. There are a number of staff items related to roles associated with what's called the collaborative applicant. They do stuff on behalf of the COC. You can consider them staff. They submit grant applications. They, we, you know, establish RFPs and get contracts with providers. But we're staff to the COC board. It's that board that's responsible for making those decisions to comply with the federal guidance. And so really, the pro and the con is, the pro is you have, you know, you need a system of support that represents all the jurisdictions and organizations to really understand and meet all the system needs that HUD requires of COCs. But if the community doesn't embrace meeting those priorities and it falls out of compliance, that's on the COC board. And you've seen communities lose funding because particular folks took advantage of whatever relationships or situation there was and kind of drove more direction. But there isn't one entity that's in charge. It's that collective board, and those seats, again, are prescribed by HUD. You can add a few seats. And so it's a tricky question to answer because it's not a formal organization, as Margaret referenced.
Right.
As staff, we follow direction of the EDOK board.
Right. And I think that's just the, that's the challenging part for me because I think when you don't have, like, I know if I have something with fire, I can go to Chief Cordero. Fired or a police department, I can go to the chief. City, I can go to Cleve, where people can come to us. But there's still a city manager that runs sort of the day-to-day ship. And so I find it a big hole in the process to not actually have a point of person, person that's in charge. I get the board. I mean, we're in charge. We've set policy for the city. But the reality is, the day-to-day implementation is with Cleve and ensuring that the city's runs correctly, just like you all are for HHS, for the county.
Right.
And so I don't know if that's something that can be fixed. I'm looking to create layers of bureaucracy. But I do think it should be, there should be somebody that is actually in charge of this whole operation because it is a huge undertaking. And to just have certain groups doing certain things without somebody else driving that day-to-day, I think is very problematic.
I need a comment, Michael.
I was on the COC last year, and they have an executive committee, and they drive the agenda, you know, the surveys they send out, they drive those. You know, we as a big committee didn't develop those surveys. And so you have an executive committee that really drives most of the agenda and how things are done. So there's not one person, but I think there's like five people or seven people that are that executive committee.
Yeah, there are several folks on the exec committee. That's a good point. And, you know, and they work with a consultant to comply with the HUD requirements. But let me be clear, though, the day-to-day work of COC is done by the individual providers, right, who implement the programs. So the COC is kind of the coordinating arm, you know, the distribution of funds. We have a plan. They plug into these categories. We select providers. But it's those providers that are responsible for their programs. And if they're not performing well, or if they're not complying, now the COC has to take action because if they don't remove funding from them, HUD says, you COC can't manage your providers, so we're going to take that money from you and distribute it to a community that better uses it. So I hear you. It is confusing, and we'll have to take it up with Congress, I guess, and see.
Yeah. Well, and I know other places have a more defined staff structure to it as well, so I don't think it's completely out of the realm to have that. The $400,000 that we provided to the county for Opportunity Knox, or no.
Home Key.
Home Key. What's the next step there since the, getting a facility, wasn't it actually, didn't happen? So just wondering what the next step is and how we might be able to use the funds that we have together to be able to do something.
Yeah. So the combined amount's about $2.25 million, and it's a CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant CV. And so the state's asking us, as you mentioned, we had it tied to the hotel in Pollock Pines. With the board not approving that direction, we have to identify another property. And so the state's asking us to identify another property. You have to purchase it. Has to be a fixed infrastructure, so you couldn't use it to purchase tiny homes, for example. And so as a part of our HHSA direction to come back to the board over the next few months, that funding is going to tie into some of those options. And so that'll be tied into there. And so we'll definitely be communicating with the city about that in advance.
Do we have a, like, is there a time period where that money reverts back to the feds if we don't use it?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer. The state's asking us to identify a property as soon as possible. They haven't, we told them, we said, you know, we're returning to our board between April and May, and we're targeting April, for your awareness. And they said, great, get back to us after April. So they were comfortable with that. But I all ask that because it's good for us to know longer term. And yeah, we'd hate to give that money back.
Yeah. I'd hate, I mean, it would just be, I mean, we need somewhere for folks to go. So it would just, it'd mean it'd be horrible to see that money revert.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the update. Thank you.
Sure.
Great questions, Michael. Are there any other questions?
Did she have comments, or? All right. So first of all, thank you guys for, and the COC for the work they've done. This is, you know, getting us to this point, it's been arduous. I have had a lot of complaints about it, about the timeframe and the timing and how long it's taken. And I haven't been always kind about my comments. And at the same time, I truly appreciate the effort and the work that has gone into getting us to this point. And I think, I don't know if kind is a matter of just hard questions because the city has been impacted and continues to be impacted by homelessness in a disproportionate way. We're six square miles, we're less than 5% of the county's area. We, you know, we have a very high percentage of that. One of the things that was lacking for me in this, in this report, and I, and I don't know that it's an omission by, on purpose, but it was a, there was not much reflection in the report about the city and the impact to our community. I do recognize that all the programs by themselves or collectively will help support the city and help acknowledge that. One of the things that wasn't addressed in the report as well is the locations and how those locations are going to be developed around the community and the recognition that all of it cannot be placed in the city. And I know that that is a, you know, what I don't want to happen is all of the options are in the city, and so we do all those options that are available. I don't, that may or may not come to fruition. I hope not. Because I do know you have a lot of liberty in how you can put these into motion. And recognizing the impact to the city and our community, as well as recognizing that we should share the impact. One of the things that I see frequently is the NIMBYism. And this comes into, this comes into any time. You, and I know that's been a big issue in terms of bringing anything forward, and you're, I would say, reluctant to bring anything forward unless it's rock solid because you go through the gambit of having the community outraged wherever that is. And so I recognize that challenge. I also recognize the fact that the city is developing housing and has been working very hard. Our staff has been working very hard, Pierre in particular, on getting our staff, getting our, meeting the goals of bringing more housing to this community. And I want to, you know, everything that you talk about here, whether we have a place where people to go on a night when they don't have a place, or we have a transitional care place, we don't have housing. The county doesn't have housing. And the city, you know, I think the city is doing our fair share right now. And so, you know, focusing on, you know, I've seen several projects come up in the county where they go to put projects in, and people don't want that in their backyard. And that is the number one, that's the number one challenge we have. Everything here could be solved much, much easier if we had housing. You know, I know that in your report, you talk about the disparity, the lack of housing. And Martin has talked about the razor's edge of people that have, that don't have a place to live and that they fall into homelessness. And it breaks my heart to think that we are not doing what we can do to prevent these people, this woman living in a car with her daughter. And that's just one story out of hundreds of stories that I, and that in the business that I'm in, I hear this time and time again. And so I can't begin to express how important, from my perspective, housing needs to be the number one priority. And I don't know how you, as an, as a, as a organization as you are, can affect construction and housing in this community. And because, I mean, we're practically, you know, the state's giving them money. We, I mean, we're doing everything, it's just crazy, the amount of money the state's giving organizations to build housing, and it's not happening. It's not happening in this town. It's actually happening in the city. It's not happening in the county much, unfortunately. So there's that. I see you wanting to get up, Daniel. Is that, or is that?
If I sit back.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't stomping on you when you wanted to respond to some of that. I see a lot of parallel paths in here, and I had the same question Michael had. And I'd like to ask this question even more, in a little more depth. You talk about we're doing X, Y, and Z in this next year, and you have a lot, you have, when I went through that project and I looked at and I started outline, looking at and highlighting the things that you're doing in this first year, I don't know how you're going to get it done. And it's really from my perspective, I kind of like what the county did in terms of asking you to prioritize, focus. you to prioritize, focus on a few things that really will drive some of the others being more successful. When I looked at that, I meant, man, who are you hiring, because you're going to need a team of people to get that done, and you are a board of volunteers that all have day jobs. I was on the board for a short time, too, and I don't know how short it was, but yes, Daniel.
Yeah, so the, you know, the committees would be made up of people who work in that area and who could impact it, so it isn't necessarily me, or Margaret, or any one person, it's, and so it's, you know, it's that implementation plan piece that will then figure out all the areas that can be affected, to your point?
Yeah.
And then kind of what's prioritized. What you don't see in plans typically is locations of projects, so if you Google plans, what you'll find is the implementation plan portion is typically then fleshing out, "These are the things we can do based on our resources, therefore, we're going to look at options for locations," because otherwise you're investing and looking for locations for something you can't do, and you just wasted time and resources doing that. So there was a methodology in terms of how they got there, but yeah, that is a critical piece of having the right people at the table to focus on that. And the implementation piece, we'll identify locations, and as you know, the board directing us to, we'll come up with locations, and preaching to the choir on housing and resources, you know, it's, you know, it isn't about having funding to do anything anymore, it really comes down to the will, and, you know, we know what works, and we can do it, it's just about having support, so.
Often, just like the situation up at Pollock Pines, it comes down to the political will of the council and the board of supervisors, willing to step out and say, "This is something we need, and these are the community we're willing to help," and I think they failed when they turned down that program in Pollock Pines. It was, it was a program that was operating, and they hardly knew that it was operating up in Pollock Pines until somebody said, "You got a program up here." And then all of a sudden, they were worried about the problem that, there was a problem in search, well, how's that work? I don't know. I don't need to go down that road any longer. It was disappointing to see that, to see that go down. So the whole staff thing, even, I work with a lot of volunteers, and volunteers are, when there's work, you know, volunteers love to give opinions, but they have them working is challenging, and so getting them to do that is great. And I don't know, you talk about staffing and such, I think that's a critical part. I'm kind of rambling on at this point, but I, yes.
I just want to speak back to that for one brief moment, because I think that, even though we talked about it being all of the people and all that, that is really the staffing, and part of what it's really hard to get people to understand about the COC, is that the volunteers are just bringing the paid employees together. The paid employees are the Tahoe Coalition for the homeless, the paid employees are Tahoe Youth and Family, the paid employees are the Prosperity Center, or the Chamber of Commerce, or the, the, home, sorry, Homeless Eldorado, like, the Upper Room, those are the paid employees, and so when we talk about, oh, it's not really a circle, and there's no real person that's responsible, the COC is the coordinating entity.
Yeah.
So we don't make decisions right, what we do is we lean, yes.
You're a convener of thoughts and people that bring ideas together.
And I think that that gets so confused that we lose the idea that these are the people who are the paid employees.
Well, I get it, and it's, you're creating the opportunity for people to come and put in their programs, like Volunteers of America and other programs like that. So I get it. It's getting that over that balance. It's going to take a balanced approach, and it's going to take a balanced approach to make sure that our community, that Placerville does not become the sole place for all the solutions. We want to participate, and I'm willing to stick our neck out and participate. We've had conversations about opportunities that could exist in Placerville, and that didn't work out. And I think that, I think that Placerville absolutely is central, but it's not the only solution. And thank you guys so much for doing what you're doing, and for taking this on, I know it's a, I know it's a, it's a lot of work. Yes, thank you.
Patty, did you have any questions?
Okay, I've got some general comments, but I think I'm going to wait until after the public's had a chance to comment. So at this time, I'll open this up to public comment on item 6.2, and please limit your comments to three minutes. If there's questions that come up, I'll invite the EDOC and Marshall and HHS to come back up at the end and answer some more questions.
Thank you, Kara. Have I got this in the right position?
Yeah, that looks perfect.
My name is Jane McGinnis. First, I want to acknowledge the council and our city manager for coming to the rescue of the winter shelter program. Over the past two years, I have seen hearts and minds change in this room, and you guys are a blessing from God for the homeless who are being and will be sheltered. EDOC COC has worked long and hard to produce this plan that they've presented, and I am confident that you will partner with the county to meet the first goal of a permanent emergency shelter and navigation center, in place before the next fire season starts. It will take more than a few months to accomplish the complex goals EDOC has recommended, but I have confidence that over time, all of these goals will be achieved. Now, what we need is legitimate feedback, but the reason I want to speak tonight is I want to respond to a letter to the editor recently published in The Mountain Democrat, which I feel was shameful. Using unreasoned and inflammatory language, the writer sought to stir up negative emotions that would serve as a roadblock to plans to serve the homeless population. The writer cited Housing First as, quote, "having been around since the 1970s," as if that means it doesn't work. What it means is that homelessness has been a problem for a long time, and the Housing First approach appears to be effective, based on its longevity. There was no mention in this letter that the epidemic of homelessness we see today began in the mid-1980s with the failure of the overall federal mental health system. The writer cited material published in a white paper from a conservative think tank, which was more of an op-ed piece than a statistical report. Right there, you're dealing with unfairness. The letter charged that Housing First coalitions take advantage of homeless veterans and the mentally ill, because these people receive disability. A tug at our heartstrings, followed by the lure to negative emotions immediately, asking, "Do you want to live next to a group of homeless people who have no accountability of not doing drugs, dot, dot, dot?" It is true that Housing First provides housing to the alcoholic and the drug addict. Does anybody really think that people without shelter, without safety, without support, are going to get themselves off drugs while they're on the street? Most shamefully, the writer ended with the ugly rallying cry of NIMBYism that has been heard for the last 2,000 years. "The vandals are coming, the vandals are coming, hide the women and children." I don't know if any of you have seen this, but this is the quote, "Do you want these large populations of homeless next to your child's school or your mother's senior care facility? If your answer is no, call your local county supervisor."
Thank you, Jane.
I urge you to support this, both the short-term and the long-term goals that EDOC has put together.
Thank you for your comments, Jane.
Please refuse to be swayed by people who fear. Okay?
Good evening, council members, Laurel Brand, I'm the Chamber of Commerce. I did have the opportunity to present to the board of supervisors an opinion at their presentation, and you did get the abbreviated presentation tonight, but I think there was enough substance for you to be able to wrap your arms around this. And I've witnessed the commitment and concern that this city council and this city has to dealing with the homeless issues. I think that you're very, very well aware of the impact on our economy because of it, and the impact of safety that I know that our fire and police department deal with every day. This program is ambitious, but it's a five-year program, this is a marathon, not a sprint. So, and it's a living, a living document, it's a living program that's going to move and adapt and change as they, as it progresses, that they see what is working and what is not, and where it should be implemented. And I agree with you that everybody needs to pay their fair share, that the burden of this responsibility should not fall specifically onto the city of Placerville. I'm in a building right across the street, and a chief friend's office gets a call from me almost once a month, that, because I have a patio in my backyard, "Can you come and get these guys out of here?" Especially with an office full of women, I get a little concerned. And we know that it's an issue, and we know that, and what was just spoken to, is if these folks don't have shelter, they have very, very little chance of changing their lifestyle, because no matter how many resources are available to them, if they're in their community, because that's what it is, that community of homelessness, with addictions and mental illness and other issues, the chance of the resources being successful is almost zero. So the Housing First element is not only a benefit to those homeless folks, it's a benefit to our community and our economy, because it takes those folks and gives them a shelter, and again, gives them a position to be available to those resources. So I hope that if you have any questions, you don't have to take all day to watch the whole thing, because that's what we did, we talked all day. But it's a super program with a lot of moving parts and a lot of tentacles, and a lot of committed people that want to make this work. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, is that all right? Can you hear me okay? First of all, I'd like to echo Jane's comments about our thankfulness and gratitude to the city council regarding the helping out with the winter lodging program, particularly the use of that building. We still refer to it in Housing Eldorado as the Christmas miracle, and the fact that one, we had the generosity of the city step up and offer that, and that we were able to rally volunteers and get that launched so quickly. So again, thank you, thank you very much. It was a wonderful Christmas present to the homeless and to our organization in a lot of ways, because it really helped us deliver on our mission. I'd like to share with you a little update report, which I have in writing. The real reason I'm here is to, again, reflect on this plan, as the vice president of Housing Eldorado, I want to express our strong support for rapidly implementing this plan and embracing it wholeheartedly. This is, in our view, you presented tonight with a really long-awaited community plan and that'll end homelessness. We think this is a real milestone for our county, a milestone event, we've been waiting a long time for this, and it provides goals and strategies that are tailored to Eldorado County, based on community feedback, as you heard, and evidence-based practices, best practices. Any plan we develop, or you approve, to end homelessness with an ambitious goal of ending homelessness, is an imperfect plan. There are no perfect solutions to homelessness. A good friend of mine said, "If you show me a perfect homeless person, I'll show you a perfect solution." And it's so true, when we think about ourselves and think about issues of home, of alcohol issues, drug abuse issues, mental health issues, economic issues, those all get infinitely more complicated once you're unhoused, and the longer you're unhoused, the more complicated they get to solve. So this plan lays out four goals with suggested strategies and action plans, along with short-term, medium-term, and long-term metrics, very well thought out. It builds upon the lessons we've learned, both inside of our county, and believe me, we've been on a steep learning curve the last two or three years, in our state and nationally, about what are the best practices and strategies to effectively address the needs of homeless residents. I want to commend the staff, the members of the Continuum Care Board, and the many dedicated volunteers, staff members, stakeholders who researched, developed, refined, and argued about what to put in this plan, and they produced, in my view, a very impressive and well-thought-out plan. In closing, I'd like to say, during the recent Calder fire, as a longtime, 40-year-plus resident of Eldorado County, we faced the worst disaster in the entire time I've lived in the county, that was the Calder fire. Obviously, the pandemic has been a disaster, but the Calder fire was a huge, huge disaster, which we're still living with the results of. And we rallied together as a community, public agencies, nonprofit groups, community organizations, law enforcement, fire service, and residents. We demonstrated as a county how we can rally together when we're faced with a crisis, and I hope that same spirit of collective community commitment will prevail again in Eldorado County as we mobilize to address our county's homeless and affordable housing crisis. We can make a significant difference in responding to homelessness by engaging all sectors of the community, recognizing the humanity of the individuals and families impacted by the housing crisis, and focus our resources on strategies that have been proven to reduce homelessness. So I encourage the city council to actively support the adoption and really rapid implementation and final version of this plan. I think Dennis's comments, and also Councilman Saragosa's comments about, as a former school superintendent, I think you need a general in charge of this implementation, in my estimation. You need somebody who's going to be the lead to that. And so I think somebody's going to need to be in that role set to really get done the kind of work that needs to get done in the timeline embedded in this plan, but that's my estimation. With that, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Peg Vanderkar, resident of Placerville. Thank you, council, and congratulations to Placerville City Council for its efforts, for its care about the homeless that we are personally, on Housing Eldorado, are experiencing, and the Secretary of Housing Eldorado also. I work at the shelter five nights out of the seven each week, doing different shifts, so I'm very familiar with how it works. So first, I wanted to say, in response to some of the questions, and they were really good questions that you all offered, the COC, and this has been said before, but from my point of view, the COC is a plan, it does have many moving parts, some of the parts are in operation now, some are just embryonic and have ideas for going forward, some are in action, we hope will continue, but are not assured of that. But it's a plan, the COC is understandably hard to understand, but the people who, and groups who are, who will run the different parts and programs, there will be people in charge of those actual programs. Second, the winter shelter works. I've experienced it on the late evening shift, the check-in shift, the driving, the moving the vans around, the providing food when we provide snacks, the taking care of folks who are having difficulties that night, and there are several people who are working because they have a place to sleep that night. I want you all to imagine if, for some reason, suddenly, you have no home, maybe it's easier to imagine these days with the worldwide news, sadly, but for some local reason, I don't know what it would be, but imagine you don't have a home. You're either alone, or you have your family to take care of, and you want to keep your job, in this magical imagination, you still have your jobs, but you have no place to go, you don't have friends with the couches that you can sleep on, and how are you going to feel about that, and what are you going to do? Safe parking is a really big thing that we need to, but that wasn't my main point. But just imagine yourself in these places, because it could happen to any of us, some of us could imagine it better than others, but it could happen to anyone. A lot of the folks I've met in shelter have, well, they all have different stories, they all have different levels of needs and the kinds of needs, and some of them have addictions, sometimes we see a little bit of the result of the addiction, but their behavior is not such that they can't come to shelter that night and sleep well. So, and some are just, you wouldn't see that there's any addiction, they just don't have a place to go. So don't put them all in one basket. I would say, in closing, please support this plan, a lot of work has gone into it, a lot of public input that created this roadmap, it's just a roadmap, but it has a start and a finish, it has a flow, and I agree, the housing at the end isn't there, that's a big thing we need to work on. So hang in there, unless we put the parts together and get those moving, then we won't get to the end anyway, so please support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. Thank you, Peg.
Don Simone, Health and Human Services. It's weird for me to be speaking during public comment, but I thought it might save you guys some time, so I don't speak later, if you don't mind. Just some observations in listening and maybe some thoughts, some things to consider. It's interesting, Health and Human Services has probably about 50 programs within the agency. And my opinion, in the three years I've been there, is none of them come as close as homelessness does when evoking emotion from people. And I will also say, I don't think I've encountered another of our programs that people's beliefs drive kind of their opinions around this program more than any other program that we have. And with that, I've kind of recently committed to publicly dispelling some myths. I certainly won't do it in one night, but there are some things that I want to get out there. One of those things is this strong connection that people like to talk about between homelessness and mental illness. I've actually heard some people say, you can't talk about one with the other. Well, most of the research, if you really get into it, shows that about one-third of homeless folks have mental illness, about a third. That compares to about 20% of us folks who are housed. So it's not 70, 80, 90%, it's about a third. So you can talk about homelessness without first saying, we've got to have a mental health component, or we can't have the discussion. You can have that discussion. The second myth is kind of around substance abuse. Most of the research says that homeless folks abuse substances somewhere between 20% to 40% of homeless. Again, it's not the majority, the research does not show that. And so I just want to put that out there as we think about homelessness. I recently heard someone saying that housing will never address homelessness. I would tell you that housing is the actual perfect way to address homelessness. Will you have other problems statistically? Yeah, maybe, but you're going to fix homelessness by housing them. Then you can serve them, if that makes sense. The other one I like, this is my last one, I promise, if you build it, they will come. Every pit count in history falls somewhere roughly between 70% and 80% of the homeless that are counted lived in that community for at least a year prior to becoming homeless. A lot of those communities, it's up to 50% have lived there their whole lives. So if you build it, they will come, isn't really founded in anything except opinion and belief. And I don't want to be disrespectful of that, I just want to add some context, because, boy, you can go way down a road if you don't kind of correct and say, no, no, here's what the data shows. Some thoughts about, some comments this evening, very good comments about inpatient and outpatient treatment. The county behavioral health has both, inpatient and outpatient. I will tell you that, as Martin said, inpatient is extremely expensive, extremely. We recently did, in this last year, IDEA Consulting worked with our Behavioral Health Division, and we went to the board and said, wow, we've got a major problem. Most communities have about 15% of their residents are in crisis and in their behavioral health system. That's about an average, about 15%. Ours was 39% of the folks in our system were in crisis. It's almost triple what the average community is. One of the main reasons for that is, we don't have lower levels of care in this county to deal with some of these mental health issues. I'd like people to start kind of thinking about the same way with homelessness. We don't have lower levels of care in this county currently to deal effectively with homelessness. As you heard before, one of four out of 58 counties with no emergency beds for single adults. Without that, and I say this, I guess it's not really funny, I can't serve people that are behind Walmart. I can't do that, right? They're not there. I can't send social workers, case managers, clinicians out there on a regular basis to help them get better. Again, it's Maslow's hierarchy. We've got to get them secure, got to get them safe, and then we serve them. NIMBYism, I agree with you. It is going to take political will. Most people might think that when you engage a community about bringing in a homeless shelter, whatever, a navigation center, that, well, if the community doesn't want it, we can't do it. But if you back up from that and think about, well, if that's the case, you're never going to do this. Community engagement is about listening to the community, talking about a potential program, and then try to go back and address their concerns and work with and engage the community to show you can actually do one of these programs in a successful way and not have that negative impact on a community. So I'll say that about the NIMBYism. I would also say that if some questions about, or a comment about more permanent housing, absolutely. Last time we measured, we were 4,000 units short. It's going to be more this next time. That's why it's a piece of the plan, and that's why you have to move several pieces at one time. The last thing you want to do is move folks into a navigation center and not focus on permanent housing. Then you're warehousing human beings. That's why the sheltering system, one of the reasons it failed in the 70s and 80s, we didn't think through that. Should have probably done it after, I could have taken more time. Last comment, five-year strategic plan. HUD requires this. It is a big, bold plan. HUD requires it. EDOC has got to have ways to address the full spectrum of homelessness, not just encampments, not just domestic violence victims, not just transition age youth, all of that. They're required to do it, they have to have this plan. And I think for me, that's it. I also heard Laurel say that it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. Very true. We're way behind. That marathon started about 25 years ago. And we're starting to move with this plan. This is a way of focusing our resources and our people to start moving in one direction with consensus goals. We've never had that. I'll say that EDOC is responsible for creating a system of care for homelessness. So that is a system that maybe starts with emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, permitted housing, all of those systems. We are missing so many components of that, that this is why you see homelessness on the streets. We just don't have it. Now we're going to start moving in that direction, hopefully. Yeah, I think I'll stop there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Don. And for those watching at home, I gave Don Simone some extra time, because he is the Director of Health and Human Services, and he was addressing questions and comments that the Council put forward. So thank you for that. All right, is there any other public comment?
Jonathan Gainsborough. I was impatient with the progress of the strategic plan, but I'm totally in favor of it, having this being the third mini presentation of the other two-and-a-half-hour presentations. Just a couple of things I'd like to target. One, I'd like to salute your humanity, because you're opening up the Christmas miracle was not just a gift to the homeless, it was not just a gift to Housing Eldorado, it was not just a gift to homeless advocates. You're opening up the Christmas miracle, Cleve and Patty and Dennis and Kara and Michael and Jackie. You're opening up the Christmas miracle was a gift to the whole community. The measure of a community is how they deal with the lowest, most needy, most pain, deluged and submerged, the most helpless people that cannot help themselves. When I prayed a month ago for a young lady, that I've mentioned before, that they asked me to come out of the upper room for my Bible study, and pray for a girl that couldn't walk in, and I said, before I pray for you, what happened? She said, I drenched myself with gasoline, and then I lit myself on fire. Praying for her again, I saw her a month later, and she's, I could touch her arm and Jane could hug her. But in my 50 years of dealing with drug addicts, and with suicides, and with the refuse of society that have fallen through, I've never been asked to pray for someone who had lit themselves on fire. And so I beg you to put your hearts into doing, even if it's impossible. Jesus said, with men, this is impossible, but with God, all things are possible. We cannot remain 10 to 15 years behind. And we're no longer 10 or 15 years behind. We're moving, so we're not 10 or 15 years behind. But we can't remain one of four out of 58 counties without emergency beds. We've got to, got to, got to have something, not just for the fire prevention, but before November starts this next fall. We can do it, there's funding there. We can do it, you can do it, God will help you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
And God bless you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sue Rodman, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am glad to see something happening. I was really happy to see us open that building for emergency shelter for people, and I am glad to see this moving forward. Yes, it's going to take a lot of work, and yes, it's going to take a little time, but at least we're making some progress instead of just bringing our hands and saying, oh, we can't do anything. So let's go.
Thank you, Sue. All right, seeing no more public comment, I'm going to close public comment on this item and bring it back to the Council for comments. I have a couple of comments. I attended the EDOC Board meeting where this plan was presented, and I've reviewed the entire plan. And first, I just want to say that, you know, this plan is really comprehensive, and it really shows a dedication to long-term solutions to this problem, which I don't think we've really ever had in this county. And I just really want to applaud the hard work from EDOC Board members, HHS, and the Homebase Consultant that participated in this strategic plan. The one concern that I had when I was reading the plan is that it really did not emphasize the need for shelter beds, I didn't feel, and it didn't, you know, it really looks at the long term, and it didn't seem to address that we are, we have some real short-term needs for shelter and navigation, especially as it pertains to the fire season, which is looking like it's going to be just a couple months away. But, you know, having, I'm encouraged by, you know, Daniel, you mentioned that the feedback has been largely that the shelter navigation is top priority, and that that's looking like it's going to be year-one priority. So I am really encouraged about that. And just some other things I find really encouraging, I, you know, this is the first time that the Board of Supervisors has really been for creating shelter, emergency shelter and navigation. And that's going to go a long ways. And we do have several affordable housing projects that are in the works and progressing. So within, you know, the next five years, I think that we will have a lot more affordable housing stock, which will help kind of, you know, keep people moving through the system on their path out of homelessness. So I think that there's a lot of good things in the works. My main concern was just that, I feel very strongly that navigation and shelter beds needs to be, you know, what all the resources are being thrown at in the immediate short term.
I have a list of comments, you only asked for questions earlier.
Yeah. Dennis didn't listen to that.
I didn't. I'm there.
I do have some elements about the plan. I do feel like you have a real discriminating element in this plan, and that your plan calls for safe parking zones, but it doesn't call for safe camping zones. And to me, if I can afford a car, you're willing to give me a safe place to be, try to get me hygiene, security, but if I can't afford a car, and all I can afford is a tent, I'm not getting those same services. And I think there's a real disparity there. You know, a car was not intended to be a shelter, a tent was, in fact, meant to be a shelter. People walk from Mexico to Canada, they walk from Georgia to Maine, all sorts of different conditions, and that is their shelter. And so I don't think that you should be dismissing that, and it may need to be part of the short-term solution, you know? We haven't talked about costs and implementation, and, you know, building costs have gone up four times as much, and contractors saying they can't even get a hold of materials, and I just want to put that forward. You know, those are really my thoughts about that, is you are discriminating there by saying it's okay for cars and not for tents. Okay, I'll wait.
I'll say one thing, and then Daniel can respond, but what I would say is thank you for that. I don't think it's been dismissed, I think it probably wasn't.
Brought up. So I would encourage you to write that in your public comment and send it in. Daniel can speak to this.
Good idea. I mean, so, so, safe parking programs are for folks who obviously have vehicles, whereas the navigation center and the pallet structure program, those were other priorities in the first six months. So those are the highest six-month priorities, were tied to emergency beds across the spectrum. So for folks in safe parking, you have a program associated with that. It's a low cost, you don't have to invest in sort of a building infrastructure, services are there. But the folks you said who have a tent, they'd be in the navigation center, they'd be in a tiny home community. So those solutions are there and did address other folks without a vehicle.
Yeah, but we don't have any of those things right now. So, you know, an open field could easily be a place to put tents where, you know, there could be security, and there could be bathrooms, and people could be moved out of the woods, and, you know, avoiding the numerous problems that go with unsupervised camping.
And those are things that, you know, the board supervisors or the city committees can do.
Okay, that's only one of my comments.
Great ideas, Jackie.
Thank you. I feel like we really need to get the difficult conversation, and Dennis kind of touched on this, with really getting down to the nitty-gritty and locations and that conversation. Everything sounds well and fine till we get to that conversation. And I really want to put this forward to the Board of Supervisors, because, you know, they shut down the Pollock Pines project without having the plan in front of them, which indicates to me that some of them have an idea that they're not sharing with the rest of us, because why would you shut down a project when you haven't even seen the strategic plan and had that whole conversation? And so this is what I want to say to each one of those supervisors, if we have 613 homeless, and we have five districts, that puts approximately 123 people per district, where are each of you supervisors going to provide that in your district? Because that's really the meat of the conversation that we need to get to and that we're avoiding, and people are circling around. You know, we've talked about in the city, we're certainly willing to do our part and our portion, but I haven't heard that conversation in any setting where each of the supervisors are talking about doing their part. And lastly, I want to touch on the build and they will come theory. It's actually one we really need to talk about, because I think it's probably one of the biggest problems we're going to have in solving our problems and implementing this plan. When we built Hangtown Haven, they came. If you look at what Auburn has done, every time they open a shelter, they have a backfill of people moving in. When you look at Salt Lake City, where they built one shelter, and they found out that wasn't a good wasn't a good idea, and they built three shelters, and their percentage of homeless is continuing to go up and up and up. And so, I don't think that worrying about populations that are transient and moving from location to location is not a problem. It is a problem. In fact, I think I heard just the other day, we have someone from Florida who just moved into town. This is an issue that we need to address, and I don't know what the perfect solution is, but I know that we need to talk about it and we need to not pretend like it doesn't exist. Because I will tell you, there is a church who puts flyers in the Bay Area and encourages people to come to Placerville. I was at the bus station when a gentleman walked off the bus, showed me the flyer, and said, can you tell me how to get to this church who's promising me a meal and where I can start my new life here? And so, we have community members who are trying to attract people from out of the area. That is happening. We have a entity who will give a tent and a sleeping bag to anyone who just arrives in town. You know, some of the partners are, don't seem to be on board with not trying to prevent people from coming from the other parts, from other areas. And so, you know, my question is, is how are we going to do that? We set up a shelter, we finally get a handle on ours, and a couple hundred more people come in, and suddenly, we don't have the resources to deal with that anymore. There, you know, are lots of solutions. You know, we are in the city at a disadvantage. We have both the jail and the hospital. People come from all over to go in those facilities, but they get released into the city. And I was glad to see the plan address kind of the medical part when people are released from the hospital, but we didn't really address when people are released from the jail, you know. Folsom has a prison. You know, they take their guards when their prisoners are released, take them to downtown Sacramento and give them a bus pass back to where they came from. I don't know if that's the exact solution, but we need to start looking at controlling that we cannot take care of everybody. And if we are going to try to take care of everybody who shows up, we're going to fail. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Just real quick, it is 7:00 right now. We have a special meeting at 7:00. We're not going to stop what we're doing and stop this meeting, but we will do this special meeting after this meeting concludes. I just want to make an announcement because it's 7:00.
Say that again. I think you said it.
We will begin the special meeting after this meeting concludes.
Right. So, Madam Mayor, if we can actually, after this item is done, open the special meeting, ask for any public comments on the closed session, because then it'll be as close to 7:00 as possible, and then we'll actually go into closed session after the regular meeting has concluded.
Okay. All right. So, we will wrap up this item and then we'll do this kind of funny thing. Okay. All right. Any other comments from council?
Oh, yeah, I have a couple. I think the first one is just the realistic nature of what we're all confronting, and I think the Board of Supervisors touched on this as well, which is really the emergency housing and getting people in the shelter prior to next winter and really before fire season. And I think that's tantamount. I mean, in the state of nature, yes, we would love to have housing for everybody. I can write some great philosophical books about state of nature or read some of those to you, but the reality is, we don't live in the state of nature. We have to live with what the reality is in front of us. And so, I love to build 3,000 units of affordable housing in the next two years. The governor has put out, he wants 3.5 million houses developed, which is a change from his original 5 million that he was going to have built before he left office. It's hard. And when affordable housing costs about $400,000 a unit, you can quickly see where it doesn't actually ever add up for a developer to build those, unless land is gifted from government or some other stimulus money that maybe comes through, which still ultimately is our money, correct? It's all tax dollars. So, we're not going to have affordable housing. We'll have about 240 units in Placerville potentially in the next couple of years, but we're going to be maybe 10%, 15% where we need to be as a county. And this is not just Eldorado County, this is the entire state of California. And so, as we look at plans, we can build great plans. You know, there's great plans that are submitted to the legislature every year for CARB, for HCD, that go to OPR, and they sit on shelves and maybe after a couple of years, people stop submitting them.
Or they redo them.
Or they redo them. And so, that's great, but let's deal with reality. And so, that's where we're going to have to be. And so, I don't want this plan to be, well, we couldn't get affordable housing, so we really can't do anything else. That's not what I think the public wants. That's not what I want. We want to be able to say that we don't have people living on the hill on Placerville Drive, that they're not living on Lower Main or behind Walmart. That's the reality of the situation, and I think that's what everybody is looking for and what we're trying to achieve. The governor made a good step forward by saying that we're going to have sort of care courts that will ultimately have to do some involuntary holds. It was a step in the right direction. I mean, Dawn, I love your statistics, but let's spend one afternoon sitting in front of my office on K Street, and those numbers will not reflect what you just said in terms of the mentally ill and the drug problems that we have. I think it's different here to some degree, but again, anybody can come down and just sit in some chairs in front of my office and you'll see quite the show. And so, we do have some serious mental health problems. Our DMH facilities throughout the state are woefully underused or they're filled with sex offenders, because that's what we've moved them to. And we moved away, we moved to a county model as opposed to a state model. Everyone blames Ronald Reagan, but it was really a federal government push to actually move to a more county system, and then we didn't actually follow through with what that was going to look like. But that's a whole other story. I just want to make sure we stay realistic about what we're trying to do and not use the lack of affordable housing to ultimately say, well, why, this is why we couldn't get something done, or why are there still people living on the hill? Because we're going to end up burning our town down or our county down. We already had a huge fire, county fire, police probably saved our bacon quite a few times. We had one just back here behind the mental health building last year. And so, we have to get something done. Not doing something is not an option. So, to Jackie's point, to Dennis, Board of Supervisors has to step up on this issue as well. I think we've done our part. We've said we're willing to be partners. We're saying we're willing to have something here, but it can't just be here, because that's not going to be enough. And we can't just say, let's have one place here and then we'll call it a day. That's not going to work, and we're not going to fulfill Boise with that as well. So, in order to give our police and our sheriffs the tools that they need, we've got to have capacity, and that means we're going to have to build this out throughout Eldorado County. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I've got a couple of kind of comments to piggyback on other comments. First, in regards to safe camping, I'm all for that. I've been kind of pushing safe camping. I was really supportive of the sheriff's plan. I thought that was a great plan. I know that that view was not widely shared by everyone, but I think that, you know, realistically, pallet shelter navigation, I think that that's great too, but realistically, I'm just thinking about how to get something done by fire season. And, you know, providing a space where people can bring their own tent and have their belongings safe and have access to sanitation and have access to services seems to me intuitively like it would be the easiest, least expensive thing to accomplish in the short term. So, I'm totally supportive of that. And I encourage EDOC and HHS to consider that as a solution, especially if it's looking like, you know, putting together the pallet homes is not going to happen by fire season, because that's really, that timeline is really the priority. And then I just wanted to kind of throw something out about NIMBYism, which comes up often, and it certainly has, it's certainly an issue and has been an issue in the past. There have been a lot of changes to zoning that's come down from the state, where, you know, a shelter is allowed by right in highway commercial. So, and affordable housing is allowed by right now in a lot of areas too. So, I think NIMBYism is going to be less of a problem. People will still be angry, but, you know, in terms of projects being able to get done, an organization can say, I'm going to buy this property in a highway commercial zone and put a shelter there, is my understanding. And Cleve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Pierre. But is that, that's correct, right? An organization can just, an organization... An organization can buy a piece of property in a highway commercial zone and put a shelter there. So, NIMBYism is not, you know, that, I think that's an excuse why things aren't getting done and it's, there's ways around it. So, I just want to throw that out there. And then, you know, to my colleagues on the council, are we, what's the game plan going forward with this presentation? Do we want to put together kind of a formal response and how do we want to go about that?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, whether you want to appoint a couple of folks to come up with that or we want to throw another thing on Cleve's, I know, he's not doing anything, so I know we can throw...
Give him something to do.
Yeah, give him something to do. But, yeah, I'm open to that. I think it's a good idea. We should have, I'd love to be able to have a city of Placerville and the mayor going over to EDOC with our comments.
Absolutely. We need to be represented, and this is one of the things why we wanted them to, you know, delay the response time and, but I think we, I really would like to see us really, all the things that we've talked about tonight, I would like to see them addressed in that, you know...
In that final plan?
Yeah. And not play this, you know, game. I mean, really state our, where we're, you know, our feelings and make, impress upon them where we're coming from and what needs to be done and what we expect.
Cleve, do you recommend a way to get this done? Do you want to be part of drafting the letter or do you want Michael and, do you have a preference?
I do not have a preference. Whatever you would like, whatever direction, whatever direction you have, I'll work with you on it.
Is the council okay with Michael and I?
I just want a couple of comments. I know we're on time, but I was, you know, I'm reading in our police report that we have in our packets. I just want to say that when you get to dispatch and it says transit-related, I want you to look at the increase in number for February alone. And, you know, these are the things that, you know, we talk about NIMBYism and perhaps I'm guilty too, but as a business owner, I have a complex and where I'm living, what we're experiencing, what I'm experiencing is the disregard for public property that these folks are thrusting on us. And when folks are, see that, you know, and my whole neighborhood, my, all my tenants and what we see, I had an incident again last night, and it's discouraging, you know? And so, I think that that promotes NIMBYism, quite frankly, because I'm, I am scared that, okay, so by okay, something, I mean, you know, a building in my neighborhood or something, is this what we're going to have? Are the, what are, are these folks going to turn, are they going to turn a corner if they're given a home, if they're given permanent status? I mean, you know, so I, I'm playing the devil's advocate right now, because my heart goes out to a lot of these folks, but it is, and there's certainly always bad apples that set an example, and I realize that. But these are the things why, I mean, our, some of the public, they can't be damned all the time for opposing, you know? So...
There are valid concerns. I mean, we put trash cans up by Broadway and we're still cleaning up the Broadway hillside. We've had our bathrooms vandalized time and time again, you know? There are valid concerns.
Is the medicine worse than the disease, though? And, you know, that's what you have to ask yourself, is helping people going to be worse than what we have right now? And the humanitarian side of me says, well, I think it's worth a try.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I think...
But I'm just saying, you know, that this is why there is opposition, you know?
I got just a couple of things to add to this conversation or just to comment on. With regard to mental health, you see the people that have mental health issues. You don't see the homeless person walking by you that's not screaming or peeing in the corner or doing all sorts of things. So, those are the people you see. And there's a lot, I deal with a lot of homeless people that you would not know are homeless because they were just walking down the street. And so, we do, that does become a focal point. And I think that statistically, I think he's closer to accurate than, but you do see it and they are there, and it's still a problem with that. I'd like to acknowledge how much work the COC does do and how much money they put out in our community, and it's in the millions of dollars, to support and keep people from being homeless and all the different programs that they support as an organization that prevents a lot of people from becoming homeless, that, from people coming out of jail, that they give them a fresh start and some home and a place to get settled before they have to go at it, to supporting programs that support homeless, to the family members, the families in the shelters that they support. There's a lot of money that goes out in that direction, as well as Marshall Hospital, who does an extraordinary amount of work in supporting the homeless. I mean, they've committed staff and people to these, to these individuals who need this help, trying to find solutions to their healthcare, so that if they can be healthy or more healthy where they're at, it gives them a better opportunity to move out of homelessness. And it's just, you know, all these things, the COC is bringing all this together to do this. I really support it. I really want to see it be successful. And I also know that everything that we're talking about are real issues and real challenges that we have. We're not going to be able to solve them, but I do know that we need to move forward.
Well, I remember when we had the Hangtown, what did we call it?
Haven.
Haven. I wanted to call it Village, but I knew that was wrong. But I remember the nurses, you were just talking about the health program, and I remember nurses came from Marshall Hospital and asked us, pleaded with us, to please open that camp, because they said, the folks are treated there at the hospital and they give them the medication, they send them out, and then they don't, they don't have help in taking it, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's just kind of a little example that I, that really made an impression on my, it's one of the reasons I approved of Hangtown Haven, quite frankly, was their plea, you know? So...
All right.
I just, last comment, which is, I just want to underscore the great need for us to get the navigation center up and running. I mean, it's one of those things where, yes, after lots of people are being helped, there's a lot of other things, but it's like, goes that old adage of, are you going to believe what I tell you or what I see? And if you talk to the great amount of the public, they're going to tell you, well, I'm going to believe what I see. And so, that's an issue. And the fact is that we do have people living up on hills and things like that. So, we have to come up with a solution to that. I mean, if everything was just on the down-low, then people wouldn't be complaining about stuff. So, we actually, I mean, there is a real need to get that navigation center up and running. I hope the Board of Supervisors will take our comments to heart as well as we move forward so that it's not just the city of Placerville stepping up to the plate. I think, you know, I want to, I'm not painting ourselves in the back, but I think we've really done our job of trying to be part of the solution here and looking at solutions and ways that we can help as a city and as individuals to be able to do something. So, again, thank you again for EDOC and for Dawn and Daniel for being here tonight. I really appreciate it.
All right. So, with that, do we need a motion to authorize Michael and I to draft the letter?
Actually, no. In order to keep it as an ad hoc committee, you would just make the appointment.
Okay. So, I'll appoint Michael and I to draft the letter.
Just a quick question. Are you going to draft the letter and send it out or bring it back to your next meeting?
No, we'll draft the letter and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll make the deadline.
Perfect.
And I, that reminds me, I really want to thank EDOC for extending the deadline so that we have time to consider this and to talk with our constituents and get ample public feedback about this really important plan. So, all right. So, I think that that concludes item 6.2. So, at this point, thanks again for coming tonight. Appreciate it. So, at this point, we are going to recess from this meeting. it. So at this point, we are going to recess from this meeting, open up our 7 o'clock special meeting, take public comment on our closed session item, which I don't have the agenda in front of me, so.
I can read it, yes. So one, now that the special meeting has been opened, we're just going to have the regular meeting and special meeting run contemporaneously. But the special meeting is a closed session. It's a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9. The facts have been identified on the agenda packet, but it has to do with the Reserve House Representatives Communications with the city. So we can take a public comment now, but then adjourn after our regular meeting has concluded.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to open.
Back to normal.
I'm going to open our closed session, item one, up for public comment. We have one person in the public who perhaps would like to comment?
I don't think she would.
No pressure.
Oh, no. Does she know what it is about?
I think the mic is off. Now it's on. Mayor and council, Sue Rodman, president of Placerville, and someone who is very irritated with PG&E.
This is only on.
Sorry, sorry, Sue.
This is only on seven?
This is actually on our 7 o'clock special closed session item.
Okay, on whether or not I think the city made the right decision, and I support you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will go back to our regular city council meeting, which brings us now to public comment. Item eight, for non-agendized items. And we'll start with oral communication since you're here.
And Sue Rodman here to tell you that I think PG&E is playing games with us and saying that Missouri Flat PG&E lines going underground has anything to do with fire safety. It has to do with enlarging Missouri Flat Road, and it's, and because they can get some kind of credit for putting the lines underground, because they're going to make the Missouri Flat wider. So they like to take credit, whether they deserve it or not. And I find PG&E to be, I have lived in four states, and they are the worst utility I have ever seen. All three of the other states I have lived in had responsible utilities. In Montana, I live 15 miles away from town, from Butte, which is not a huge city in the first place, and it's the end of two and a half miles of dirt logging road. And Montana Power never left us without power longer than eight hours. I moved to California, and in the first winter, we were out, out of power for four days, and I lived in the city limits. I was totally surprised. However, I have become, after 30 years, not to be surprised at PG&E, although they have done nothing to keep their lines and their transmission and their everything in their infrastructure up to snuff. They have been setting fires since 2004, that I know of, when they started the power fire out of Salt Springs Reservoir from their power lines. And they've been doing it ever since. So I am not impressed with them putting PG&E lines underground in Missouri Flat. What I want to know is, why haven't they put PG&E lines underground in Placerville? Because even though we have an option for Pioneer now, that's only for the generation. PG&E is still the transmission and distributions. And where are the problems from PG&E? Their transmission and distribution system. It's not their generation system that's giving us problems. It's their distribution and transmission lines. So I'd like for the city to take PG&E to task and say, oh, why haven't you at least undergrounded for the other side of Main Street? They at least need to do that. They've undergrounded one side of Main Street, why not the other side? And Placerville is a lot more risk of fire than Missouri Flat. So that's my off-the-cuff irritated with PG&E again.
Thank you, Sue. All right, we will close public comment and go back to 8.1, written communication. Regina, do we have any written communication?
You did receive one item just today that I emailed out to you. It was actually regarding the item, the presentation that we just received, just for your information.
Okay. All right. So that brings us to, we have no items under nine, 10, or 11. So item 12, discussion, acknowledge and file the fiscal year '21, '22 mid-year budget report as presented. And Mr. Warren, you have this report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the report before you tonight is, we're intending to answer two primary questions. One is, how is the local economy doing? And two, is the city living within its means? And we'll take a close look at your general fund and all your operating funds, as well as your economic indicators, including unemployment rates. And as you know, 2021 was the recovery year from the pandemic. And I'm pleased to report that both Placerville and the county actually recovered faster than our regional partners and the state. State of California began in January of 2021 at 9.2%, and ended at 5.0%. And Placerville actually started at 7.3%, and we ended at 3.3%, which is really good, when you consider back in January of 2020, we were actually at our record low of 2.9%, which is the lowest I've ever seen it, then the pandemic happened. But the 3.3% where we were at in December is actually about where we were before the pandemic, which is great. Considering that rate, it's you're at full employment. Looking at your real estate in the greater Placerville area, meaning the 95667 ZIP code, sales volume was actually up the first six months of the year. And then, actually, the last six months, there was one quarter or one month, November, where we were up. But overall, we were up 19 units. And when you look at the volume compared to your sales, average sales, average sales were actually up 11 months out of the 12-month period, which is great. So our prices held, although the market is starting to cool down just a little bit, even though inventories are low. And now I hand it over to Director Zeller to talk about our recreation attendance numbers.
Thank you. Let me just find my space here. Okay. Our recreation numbers were pretty interesting this year because of the pandemic. And if you take a look at the July to December 2021 over 2020, you can see that we had a large increase in our gold bug tours, as well as our aquatics. We had a fairly nonexistent program then. And we were also able to recover quite a bit for our special interest groups and classes. Adult sports has continued to be difficult, just because of the time of year that it falls. And we were able to do some softball last year and this past year. But as you are aware, our basketball and our other youth activities, athletic activities have been fairly off the charts. So we are expecting a pretty good rebound this spring, based upon the fact that we're going to have our flag football, and that will be coming to the city council for a review in the next month or so. But I can take any questions on that after we wrap up the presentation.
Thanks, Terry. Moving on to our building division activity, I'll hand it over to Director Rivas to talk about that.
Thank you, Dave. Looking at this first chart, this represents our building division activity. So when you look at that, the next to the last column there where it says July through December 2021, that is actual. And then the last one is your forecast. And we're basically forecasting something just a little bit better than what we saw in 2019, 2020. The planning check fees are going to come in a little bit lower. We had some really good high-dollar applications that came in. That's going to push us a little bit above the 2019, 2020 actual for the remainder of this fiscal year. The next slide is showing the issued building permits. If you were to do a straight line beginning at the 2011, 2012 fiscal year to the present fiscal year, you can see we've been slowly increasing our activity over time. So we're getting busier and busier in the office, a real good thing. During the pandemic, we saw a pretty substantial increase in building permit activity, primarily smaller permits, say decks, remodels, that kind of thing, as people hunkered down in their home and, you know, focused more on, on what was going on within their surroundings, instead of traveling and spending money on those kinds of things. They were spending money on pulling building permits and doing improvements to their home. So you can see for the remain, we're, if you look at the red dots, you can see where the mid-year is for those fiscal years. And you can see where, you know, we're still expecting a better than we've seen in any of the previous fiscal years in terms of just the sheer number of building permits. Moving on to building valuations, so a lot more, a lot more changes in this one. Basically, you can have a large project that'll really add a lot of value to the valuations, for example, a big or commercial building or something like that. So for, for the remainder of this fiscal year, we're still looking at pretty much what we saw maybe in 2014, 2015. Then we had a jump of some commercial buildings that really pushed it up. You see that 2018, 2019, of course, we had some real expensive buildings that were built that pushed evaluations up, and then it sort of leveled off. So remaining fairly constant there. Looking at the next slide, planning and zoning revenues, we saw a big spike for this fiscal year, and that was due to some larger, more expensive building permit applications that came in that brought us a lot of additional revenue, pretty substantial for the planning and zoning revenue side. Normally, we don't, you know, we only see less, you know, maybe a third of this amount. So we're pretty pleased about that. Moving on to single-family dwellings, seen a lot of fluctuations here. We had a, a big boom in 2015, 2016, I think primarily due to Escaton built out. For 2015, 2016, 2016, 2017, we also had Winesap that was building out. Things have slowed down a little bit. So the remainder of this fiscal year, we're looking at probably maybe only two additional homes being built between now and the end of the fiscal year. But we're hoping to really show the substantial increase in, maybe not single-family dwellings, but mainly in apartments and those kind of things. Next fiscal year, we have cottonwood that should final sometime soon, and we're going to see the ability to build another 39 residential units there. We're still keeping our fingers crossed about Estonia, that's the old Placerville Estates that's below the airport. I think there's another 29 units or so there of single-family homes. So keep in our fingers crossed, if that one gets final, then we'll see some additional development there. Moving on to the next slide, we're looking at impact fees. And the impact fees are, you know, directly reflect mainly new hookups. So we're talking about residential development. And so those fees reflect that, the water and sewer. And then moving on to impact fees continued, we have traffic and park. And I want to point out the traffic or the TIM or traffic impact mitigation fees, that last bar there for the 2021, 22, that really should be $81,000 and not $143,000. My apologies to the council and to the public. I happen to have pulled a slightly older version of this table, and so it didn't reflect that. But staff is working with Mr. Warren in finance, so we're going to provide him with the corrected one, and we'll have the corrected figure on our website. So the public will see that it's actually $81,000 that we're projecting for the fiscal year. Looking at park, park again is very reflective of residential development. So since we don't have a whole lot going on in 2020, 21, 22, the revenues are down. And that concludes development services. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Thank you, Pierre.
Thanks, Pierre. Pierre, Estonia, is that on the east end of the, of the airport?
That would be at, I would say it's north, below the airport, a little bit more towards the, the east end of it.
Okay.
So if you go up to Broadway, it's, it's accessed by Texerna.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And it's been graded and stuff. It just doesn't have any utilities or anything like that. A lot of work still to really turn that around.
Thanks, Pierre. Moving on to encroachment and transportation fees, and I'll hand it over to City Engineer Neves to cover this.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As we continue to look at the local economy and economic climate, the best methods engineering really has to measure that data is through our encroachment permit and transportation permit processes, which really just track the movement of goods and services within the city limits. Similar to some of the same trends that Director Rivas mentioned, we also saw a pretty decent spike in 2020. You know, folks stayed home and, but they did get to work on their homes. We did see a drop in transportation permits, which makes sense, because people weren't going anywhere. But we did see almost a four times the amount of encroachment permits than we did the prior year. Partially, this was also due to a significant increase in encroachment permits from PG&E. You may recall, the campfire took place in November 8th of 2018. There was the issuance of direction and orders from the state to address their facilities, and that really started to take root at the very tail end of 2019 and into 2020. They were moving along pretty good. Also, we saw this last year, we did see encroachment permits drop a little and transportation permits increased a little, which indicates people are going back out and moving around materials and whatnot. And we do have a projected anticipated higher volume in permits coming into this year, a little higher from what we received in 2021. But again, you know, still a pretty decent jump overall from prior years. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Quick, quick question. And I'm going to show my ignorance here, but what does one need a transportation permit for? I, I get encroachment permits, but this is the, I've never noticed transportation permits.
Well, I will use a recent example. So when an oversized object or vehicle is traveling down a road, they have to have a transportation permit. It's actually a requirement through the vehicle code. And when they don't have one, it becomes a matter where you have to take it up with CHP. But the long story short is, it's to verify that the route that they've taken will not cause damage to public facilities or private facilities, buildings, et cetera. So for example, if you have a bridge that only has a vertical clearance of 13.6, which is the legal vehicle height, and you have a mobile home on a trailer traveling, and it's at 15-foot heights, and it's not going to clear that, and they submit for a transportation permit, the agency would say, hey, you can't take this route. The mobile home's too big. And they would say, you have to find a different route. And they would reject the permit, and they'd find a different route that eventually gets them through town in a safe and non-damaging manner.
Okay. So this is, so I passed a mobile home going down the road earlier today, not in Placerville, in the county. But.
I'm like, where?
Just.
They don't have a permit.
But just because, no, I'm curious. So, you know, when something travels a large distance and through multiple towns, do they, they're required to get permits everywhere they go?
Yes. Yeah, actually. And they will go through El Dorado County as well, and El Dorado County works with us. And, and the county, you know, I mean, obviously, we're so small, but we're, you know, completely surrounded by the county. The county does a pretty good job of providing some good. a pretty good job of providing some good feedback on some potential routes through town, you know. And I, and the, for example, the Columbo Street pedestrian overcrossing is actually a fairly low overcrossing as far as the highway goes. And so, you know, when it's a larger object, they'll want to have some, a factor of safety of spacing. And so they will, you know, guide them to take an alternate route, either, you know, maybe Pleasant Valley Road or what have you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I just-
Oddly on that, so we actually had a client, this is so weird, that they were buying farmworker prefab housing in Texas, and they were able to get, they could get the housing to the California border, but it was actually one foot, it wasn't height, it was width. It was, it was one foot too wide, and CHP wouldn't give a variance to allow them to bring that in to California. They had to resell them back in Texas and buy other houses that were two feet-
No way.
Less.
I mean, this is what gives a state a bad rap.
As a random story.
All right.
All right. Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Moving on to Bradley Burn sales tax, which is your general fund sales tax, it represents 1% of your 8.25% sales tax, and it's your most significant local economic indicator. It represents 59% of your general fund. And we continue to have strong per-capita sales tax. In 2020, we were at $508 per, per capita. And Placerville is ranked number 25, which was the first time ever out of 539 agencies, and we hope to be number one someday. The quarter ended September 2021, increased by 194,000 or 13.2% on the cash basis. And when you take into consideration adjustments from the prior period back taxes, if you will, it actually equated to 12.5 or $181,000. Statewide actually exceeded our performance at 17.56%, but still, when you consider 13% in one quarter, that's pretty hefty year-over-year. And looking at your contributors, you can see that the state and county pool represented a little over 25%. Before the pandemic, that was about 20%. So we have kind of a paradigm shift with online buying, purchasing, and that grew by five percentage points. Autos and transportation, 27.92, and building and construction, 16.53. And you can see the rest of those other categories. And that's important when you consider the next slide, which is your year-over-year growth. You can see that all the categories except for building and construction and business industry had significant growth. Autos and transportation, 18.99%. Fuel and service stations, 35.83%. A lot of that due to increased pricing, not necessarily volume. But it was great to see restaurants and hotels mostly, that's mostly restaurants, 26.76% year-over-year growth. So very good. And then we appreciate all of our businesses here in town, especially our top 25. And I know you just saw this list not too long ago, but Chuck's Cannabis is added to that list, and you can see the rest of them there. I've seen most of those before. And then looking at your growth, the red bar indicates cash, and then the blue bar is adjusted for annual inflation, and then the green bar represents cumulative inflation since 2011. And you can see that, based on our forecast, we anticipate receiving, adjusted for inflation, it's equal to about the fiscal year 17, 18 level due to inflation. And we do, we did receive $6.1 million in 2021. We forecast in fiscal year 21, 22, 6.4 million. So $370,000 year-over-year or 6.07%. And then looking at the growth over the last five years, you can see that over the last five months, we've had significant growth, double-digit in every quarter for the last five quarters, anywheres from about 13% all the way up to about 22%. And one of the things, I know we've talked about this before, is the impact of inflation. Because of supply disruptions and other impacts, the pandemic being the primary, we have seen prices rise, which has then raised your base for sales tax. And that may not last. As the supply chains free up, as things continue to improve in the overall economy, hopefully those prices will drop, which means unfortunately, your base will drop. But, so we just need to be cognizant of that, especially this fiscal year, when you see the level of sales tax, we may not want to build upon that completely going into the next fiscal year. So. And then your adopted budget was 20, 21.2 million, and the general fund portion of that was about 9.7 million. It included most restoration of pre-pandemic service levels, and it did include a $75,000 contingency. Since that time, you've adopted two revisions. One is the $40,000 budget appropriation for the Hangtown Creek culvert and a $3,500 salary study budgeted. And that was beyond your $75,000 contingency, which we, it's exhausted at this point. And as a reminder, your general fund, your budget, this is a general fund dollar. So when you look at each dollar, 33 cents goes to the police department.
Good job.
27 cents to community services, nine cents to non-departmental, eight cents to administration, seven to public works, nine cents to development services, five to finance, two to engineering, and one penny to the council. So you're very frugal. We appreciate that. And then-
I keep saying we're not, we never get to even be worth two cents.
You're getting closer. You're halfway there. So this, just, just a reminder, when you look at your revenues compared to your expenditures, proportionally what it looks like. And you can see when you compare sales tax, for example, it represents police and community services. It doesn't mean that that's where all the money goes, it's just proportionally to kind of give you an idea. And then when you look at your revised budget for the general fund, we started out $9.7 million in revenue, and we're actually forecasting, based on our analysis, 10.5 million. We're $714,000 over budget or 7.3%. Most of that is sales tax, and we'll talk more about that. And then expenditures, we started out with a $9.6 million budget. We're forecasting being below budget by about 213,000 at 9.4, 2.2%. Transfers out net equal. So going from your revised budget of a $26,000 plan use of fund balance to a surplus of $901,000. So a surprise, a pleasant surprise, and we'll talk more about some ideas for that in the future. So moving on to your revenues, for those of you that like the numbers, you can see that, bless you, sales tax, we're forecasting $706,000 over budget or 12.24%. All other taxes, that's your property tax, your franchise fees, your TOT tax, transfer tax, and your cannabis tax. And you can guess that, that that increase is due to about $238,000 of anticipated cannabis tax that we did not budget for. We didn't know how much we were going to receive. We've received two full quarters so far, and so we forecasted based on the last quarter, as these businesses grow, no pun intended, they will produce about $238,000 in additional revenue. So Mr. Rivas tells me that he anticipates about $8,600 less in construction permits, based on his analysis, which you went over. Intergovernmental revenues, that's your property tax and vehicle license fees, up by 14,000. Charges for services is down primarily because of the planned cancellation of youth basketball, adult basketball, and adult volleyball programs, which next year we hope to restore. But due to the pandemic, the mandates, and gym availability, we had to cancel those programs. So fines and forfeiture is slightly up by 1,900. Use of money and property up by about 22,000. Other financing sources, which is your indirect costs to your water and sewer funds equal. So up by 714,000 total for your revenue or 7.3%. On the expenditure side of the ledger, you can see that by department, the variance is there. The police department was heavily impacted, as you know, by the Calder fire and other, as comments earlier. And due to overtime, they anticipate being over by about $69,000. But that's just looking at the expenditure side. We do anticipate receiving approximately $51,000 in reimbursement for that, and that'll offset that $69,000. And then you can see in development services, 94,000 in savings primarily due to contractual services and vacant, your planner position that's been vacant in that department. Engineering, slightly over $36,000. However, revenues cover that primarily. But contractual services and offset by vacancies increases there. Community services, 137,000. We talked about the cancellations of the three programs and the savings of youth basketball, adult basketball, and youth volley, adult volleyball. And then public works slightly, slight savings, $9100. Officials, 4,000 savings, good job. City administration, $22,000 savings there. Finance department slightly over due to HDL audit costs. There are a little more activity than we anticipated. And then non-departmental savings of $55,000. So overall, $213,000 less compared to our revised budget or 2.18%. And our assumptions include just pay-as-you-go for Gatsby 75, which is our other post-employment benefits or retiree medical. We pay just the actual premium. There's nothing being set aside for retiree medical. And it does assume expanding the entire $75,000 contingency. And the forecasted surplus is primarily due to the $706,000 in additional sales tax, the $238,000 in cannabis tax, offset also by the $213,000 in budget savings on the expenditure side. So looking at your performance since 12, 13, you can see we've lived within our means. We did have some planned fund balance spending back in 17, 18 for equipment and capital projects. But we anticipate just under a million-dollar surplus last year, this year as well, about $900,000. So again, part of that, though, is due to inflation, the cuts we've made. One of the things that the first year of the pandemic, we didn't know if we were going to get any stimulus, so we had to take care of our business locally, and we did. But fortunately, we did get some of the American Rescue Plan funds as well. We'll talk more about that. Water Enterprise Fund, good news as well. Your user rate revenues up slightly, more than what our study showed. Our study was developed during the last drought, and so water consumption slightly higher. And so that contributed about $302,000 in additional revenues there. And expenditures, we're actually anticipating $53,000 down as well. So what that does is it creates $355,000 more for engineering to do projects and public works. So you can always use that. And then similar story to the sewer enterprise fund, revenues up, user revenues by 111,000 based on our trend. Expenditures actually slightly over by $81,000. But net, what that does is it, it creates, your budget was at $861,000 in net revenues, and that is net of Measure H coming into the sewer enterprise fund. It creates 891,000 or $29,000 more for projects, again, for public works and engineering. So moving into your non-major funds, I'm not going to go through all of these, but just want to comment on a few. Measure L, like your Bradley Burns and Measure, well, we talked about Bradley Burns, you can see that the forecast, instead of 2.4, we anticipate almost $3 million. So about another $600,000 in Measure L. Measure H, for, the budget was 1.2, we're estimating a little over 1.4 million in sales tax. And so that creates additional funds for projects there. Measure J, this is one of the best things about this report is, you may recall the last three or four years, Measure J has had deficits, and we've had to transfer funds in from your general fund to help balance it. We actually anticipate having a $272,000 surplus in that fund. And so once we're fully staffed again, I could see that becoming a deficit or a goose egg. But for now, we have some, hopefully, our, our forecast comes through and we'll have some extra cash in that fund. And then gas tax, more good news. We anticipate about another $33,000 in revenues that we didn't anticipate coming in this fiscal year. The only bad news in this report is your downtown parking fund. And unfortunately, daily parking and parking citation revenue was down. And we, we feel that most of that is, all of it is due to the pandemic. Things are improving, and hopefully my number, my $1,900 deficit is better, maybe, you know, at least a goose egg, maybe some net revenues there. But just so you know, in order to fund this year's projects, we're going to have to dip into fund balance. We have a little over $200,000 in the downtown parking fund that we can use for those projects. But just wanted to make you aware of that. And the rest of those, the American Rescue Plan, you adopted about $800,000 for operating costs as well as projects. $266,000 of that $800,000 was for operating, so for police cars, software, you know, our utility billing assistance program, those kind of things are operating-related. So we included that in this analysis. So you could see that. And these other funds, your general liability fund, I did have a conversation with your city attorney, and we did look at the claims and the anticipated impacts of those claims through June 30. And I, I feel we have well enough net revenues to cover those potential costs going through June 30 that we know about right now. So. And so, look, looking at your entire budget, operating budget, your revenue is budgeted 26.4 million, forecast 28.5 or 2.1 higher than budget. And that's primarily due to the increases in sales tax, your cannabis tax, and your enterprise funds. And then expenditures, 21.5. We forecast 21.2 or $222,000 less, about 1%. So you end up with net revenues of 7.3 before projects. And most of that money has already been encumbered or appropriated, excuse me, for projects. But it does leave about $2.3 million more for projects. So, or reserves. And in closing, you know, your local economy has recovered and rebounded from the pandemic. We, staff will continue to monitor the inflationary impacts and the unwinding of the federal and state stimulus. That was one of the other things I am concerned about. There's a lot of federal and state stimulus money, which is one-time in nature that's flowing through our economy, that's tilting it up. And eventually, that money's going to run out. So we just need to be cognizant of that as we build our future budgets. So we'll continue to monitor that. And the council and management continue to operate the city in a prudent, responsible manner. And we anticipate year-end operating revenues to exceed the operating expenditures to those funds. And we'll also provide you an update when we meet at your budget workshop on May 5 or around there. I know we're still working on scheduling that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren and our department heads. That was a great report, very thorough, as always. Any questions or comments, Pierre?
The general fund budget, when you showed this one here, hopefully maybe you can see it better than I can here. Did that, did that, did that increase include the ARPA funds?
Oops. That is just the general fund.
Okay.
So the, we did receive last year the $135,000 in coronavirus relief, which paid for a police officer, a dumpster, and some unemployment insurance, which helped the general fund. But most of that growth was-
Sales tax.
Due to net revenues. Yeah, good, really good luck. And, and I do want to mention, I know it's been mentioned in past meetings, that the approach that the county and the city council took to the pandemic and the way we operated really helped get us through that time. I can't highlight that enough. Because you see what has happened in other cities, mostly along the coast, where they're still, some of them are still trying to reopen. And their, their businesses are shuttered and their budgets are tanked. So I really appreciate the approach the council took in that.
Thank you.
Dave, I just want to express my appreciation that you're our numbers guy. You always make it easy to understand and put it together so thoroughly. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Ditto.
Ditto.
I'll just make a quick, brief comment. You know, this is good news. If we had seen a budget like this in like twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen, it would be really exciting. Not that it's not exciting, because it is, but our expenses, you know, with gas prices going up, it's going to cost a lot more to deliver projects. Rebecca, am I, are you worried about delivering capital improvement projects?
Yeah, that's why I invoke prayer in pretty much everything. Yes, no, I mean, we are actually seeing a lot of construction costs go up. So luckily, I, you know, I don't know if it's just the divine timing of it, but we just really do have, we have kind of a stalemate on some larger projects right now that will end up going out to construction a little later than we had anticipated. So the hope is that things kind of start to calm down and things start to go down. They will inevitably go down, as we've seen it in history before with construction prices, when they go through this inflationary peak. So that's the hope.
Okay. And, you know, with, with so much of these gains being from inflation, it means that our taxpayers and residents are, you know, the more money that comes in as revenue to the city is money that is, is additional money out of their pocket at a time where prices are going up across the board. So I think it's easy to look at this budget, if anyone's watching from home and think that, you know, the city is
Rolling in the dough.
Rolling, rolling in the dough. But the reality is, you know, people may start reducing their spending in the next year if prices continue to be what they are, and the cost for us to deliver on our services are going to increase. So a lot of the gains that we're seeing are not as amazing as they would have been in twenty eighteen.
Kara, your question reminded me, I was going to ask Pierre, kind of the same question, the, seeing all the increase in lumber and just to build, whether you think that's going to affect our projection on housing that we're anticipating?
What I'm hearing from a lot of the contractors that come to the public counter is that indeed the price of construction materials has gone up quite a bit. There was a time when lumber was really, really going up quite a bit, then it came back down. But I think it's interesting, because it seems that the invasion of Ukraine by Russia is really spurring a lot of impacts and a lot of increases in commodities. Fuel, for example, would be a big factor. In fact, it's, you know, can go anywhere up to a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars a barrel, meaning that we could see seven dollars a gallon at the gas pump. Well, all of that contributes to the cost of transportation of the materials that have to be transported from somewhere else, and that will also be reflected then in the cost of all the various construction materials that have to be imported from somewhere.
Right. Okay, thanks.
If I may. There's, I second your comments when it comes to our economy or the money, how great this looks. I saw that, and I was, I was excited to see it. At the same time, I recognize the monies that we have expended out of our rainy day fund and that we have not recovered fully in. I know we're floating somewhere around, our goal is twenty percent, and we're somewhere around sixteen percent. Is that a number?
Prior, in fiscal year nineteen twenty, it was running around fifteen percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that is, that is what saved us going into this pandemic and allowed us to have some flexibility in how we operated. And, and so I think prudence, you know, I don't want to get too excited on, and I don't know anybody here that wants to get too excited on, on figuring out how to spend that, set aside, making sure that we are fiscally sound as well. And I don't want to, I don't want to preclude the idea of, you know, opportunities as they may exist, but I'm, I'm, I know that you, Dave, will be, will be advocating for a prudent approach to, to this money as well as, I feel that as well. I just, I'm excited at the opportunity to repay our funds. I'm also excited at the idea that there may be some limited opportunities to, to improve our situation here at home as well. So thank you. Great report.
All right. With this, I'll, I'll open it up to the public.
Okay. Sue Rodman, your one commenting public. I would say that the penny spent for our city council is extremely well-spent, and I am absolutely amazed that the two cents that we spend for engineering is just incredibly well-used by Rebecca and her crew, that they get so much value for the city from it. And Dave does a great job putting these together, so, and keeping us so that we're a solvent city instead of going into bankruptcy. So, good job.
Thank you, Sue, and thank you for sticking around for the budget. It's one of the most, I think, important items that come before the city council and nobody hears
Where, where's everybody? They're all watching at home, I promise.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. So that concludes our discussion items for tonight. We've already done thirteen. That brings us to fourteen, request for future agenda items. We'll bring back this letter at the next one. Okay. Any other requests? Nope. All right. Item fifteen, we have, fifteen point one is a receive and file the police report, and I just, I'll give Chief Ren the opportunity to make an E, highlight anything on that that he would like to.
Every time I say I'm not going to say anything, something, it makes me look bad. So I'm going to just say something at the onset, not knowing if he, in fact, is going to say anything. I do want to publicly recognize the fire department and specifically the crews out at Station Twenty-Five. We've had our patrol staff several times over this past month needing their services, and they've been, they've been on the spot. So I, from my patrol staff and trickling up through command and from me, thank you. And please pass on that gratitude to those men and women over there. Everything's pretty much the same, which translates into us being busy. We did do a soft rollout of our, our policing zones. We'll do a more extensive social media campaign and public outreach effort. But what that does is place a sergeant responsible for a geographical location, one of four in the city of Placerville, to address specifically quality of life issues, relying heavily on broken windows theory, utilizing Sarah Model, and try to make those, those very tangible neighborhood impacts. You know, every time we get, start to gain some ground, we have an officer injured or there's a vacancy that occurs. So it kind of sets us back a little bit, but it doesn't stop us in our tracks. Still moving forward, still here for the community, and we won't give up the fight. Thanks.
So by, you're saying you're going to, like, divide it in quarters, that, and a sergeant would be in charge? And so if a complaint comes in about their particular area, then it goes to them to handle?
Any long, any long-term, anything that we would consider a long-term operation, the immediate needs, obviously call the police department, and the beat officer will respond and address it. But if you have specifically complaints about somebody within the neighborhood potentially selling drugs, that would be, information will be reported to that sergeant, and then they would develop a plan on how to respond to that complaint. So your, your immediate stuff, still call the police, and we'll be there. But for long-term issues or, or issues directly impacting, you know, like I said, the quality of life of, of a specific area, that's where those sergeants will work with their teams and create a, a response plan, kind of like a COPS project to
That sounds like a great plan, I think.
It's back to the basics of community policing. You know, we, you know, it's funny, every year, something new and fancy comes out in our industry, and it's like, hey, why don't we just do what we've been doing for a long time that's really worked? And I've, I've always been a practitioner, or strongly believed in, in the broken windows theory, and how if you start to, you know, positively affect an environment, that it's contagious and people will normally not, you know, continue in their, you know, deviant or criminal behavior, so, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. That brings us to fifteen point two, the fire station report. Would you like to make, highlight anything?
Good evening, council. I guess, in all honesty, the, the report that I know that Chief Ren and I kind of jab back and forth, and it's all in good, good fun, but, you know, my whole career has been, has been working side by side with Placerville PD, and I think we kind of put those folks together, and they're working together, and it's, it's good to hear the positive comments because it really is kind of a family environment. Calls were down slightly for Station Twenty-Five during February. Don't really have an explanation as to why, there's a little bit shorter month, but the last few days, they've definitely made up for that.
Don't say anything. Keep it a secret.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep that down. But, no, it's, it's been busy. We did have one incident up at the airport, which is highlighted there on the cover of the report, and appreciate the support from Placerville PD on mitigating that, that incident. Then I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for you, Chief? All right. Thank you for those reports. Appreciate it. All right. That brings us to fifteen point three. This is an update for the council and public on planned sites and days utilizing the ARPA funding for fire fuels reduction on city property. And Mr. Zeller has this report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to provide an update on the efforts by the city to reduce fire fuels on public property, and those are possible using the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. A little bit of history, we applied in May of last year for a twenty-twenty-one state fire reduction grant. It was a very competitive grant, and we were not awarded for that. But we did have all of the work that was done to try to target the city properties that we had. And within that grant, we had already identified eleven locations that had a total of seventy-seven acres of public land that really needed fire reduction. And so with this new funding that had come up, staff was able to take a look at how that would apply to ARPA funding, and the council was supportive of the project that we have that's ongoing right now. So the total dollars that we're looking to spend for this fiscal year is a little over four hundred thousand, and then remaining two hundred and nine thousand for the following fiscal year. And that is pretty much the, the chunk of dollars that was in the grant for fuel reduction. The grant was around eight hundred and ninety thousand total, but there was also costs in there for equipment and also for a grant program for private property. And speaking of private property, it is worth noting that Development Services Department has been working on their plan for abatement of vegetation and materials posing fire hazards. And mostly what is going on is, as far as process goes, is the properties of concern are brought to the department, usually through citizen complaints. Our staff is pretty good at observing that, Pierre's staff is, or referral from the county. And then the process begins with a notice that's mailed to the property owner, and they get ten days to contact city staff, and hopefully, they are interested in abating those hazards. But continued non-compliance leads to fines that accumulate until compliance is obtained. It's worth noting, the city itself has not undertaken any fire and hazard abatement of private properties since inception of the ordinance due to lack of available funding. And the cost of abatement incurred by the city can be recouped by placement of a lien against the property or through real property assessment, collection of tax. And so there are sixty open cases. So I was glad to get that information from Pierre and include it in our staff report. As far as process and prioritization, on page two of your staff report, there are the eleven public properties with the acreages in them that are needing fuel reduction. And those are the city's wastewater facility, the Big and Slope Land on Ray Lawyer Drive. This is pretty much across from the entrance to the county complex. On Lower Placerville Drive, slope under the El Dorado Trail that's been worked on a few times. Acreage around the city corporation yard, there's not a whole lot there, but there are some areas that need to be treated. The former water treatment facility up on Party. Rotary Park has some areas. There's a property on Crestview Drive that the city owns that is completely wooded. Of course, our biggest one is Goldbug Park. There are forty acres of, of area out there, out of their sixty that need to be really focused on. Duffy Park, a lot of people don't know, but the hillside that runs up off of Arizona and Clay, we do have about two acres of wooded hillside there. And then Lumston Park, even though it seems like a vast area, the park itself is only around four point one acres, but there's about two and a half acres when you take out the manicured areas and the pond that still need to have some fuels abatement. And then the areas around Lyons Park, both the upper and the lower part of that. So in looking at these eleven properties, we have prioritized three in this fiscal year based on the immediacy of fire danger and the acreage. And so those were Goldbug Park, Lower Placerville Drive slope under the El Dorado Trail, and Lyons Park. And so this, this is also the lion's share of the acreage that needs to happen. Goldbug Park, of course, represents the most immediate concern. It holds the city's largest wooded and sloped terrain, and it has multiple upslope neighborhoods around it and narrow roads that are difficult to access in case of fire. The Lower Placerville Drive area had, had work done on it previously, but it also, it also has existing concerns with the homeless population and camping, which increases the fire danger. And there's also the upslope on the south port of this, portion of this parcel up through Fornie Road, and anybody driving up there knows how difficult it is to access a lot of those properties up there, and it's a lot of residential. And it's also on the western boundary of the city, which would put it in a critical location if fire were to start there with prevailing east winds. Lyons Park has a fairly irregular wooded boundary, and we also have upslope neighborhoods. Northern and western slopes have a lot of fuel, and we also have the combination of the disc golf course, which has a thick, tall, grassy area that could spread fire quickly. So looking at this fiscal year, we're looking at those properties, but then the, the other eight are going to be prioritized in the same manner, and this will take care of those larger ones, like the old water treatment plant on Party Way and the wooded boundaries of the wastewater treatment facility off Mallard Lane. So timeline, we are working as quickly as we can. We've already got a shortlist, and I've already got some responses back from our GOAT service, and tree service contractors are being contacted now. And we're looking at getting requests for bids back due around April fifteenth, and I think we're probably going to get them quicker than that for some. And we're going to try to target work from May first with a completion date of July fifteenth for those first three project areas. And then we're going to concurrently be working on bids for the additional eight properties, which is about twenty-two acres for the next fiscal year. And those are going to be sought following their seat of the first three bids, because we want to see where they come in and hopefully be able to do the, the balance for the six hundred and nineteen some odd dollars that we have. So those would be start date of July first, and we want to complete those before the end of September. I provided some basic funding for you based on the dollars that we had put together in the grant. And so basically, what happens is you bring in a GOAT And so basically what happens is you bring in a goat contractor first and they chew down pretty much anything that's within reach. They even climb trees. I don't know if you've ever seen goats, but they're a little crazy. And they can really mow down an area. They eat anything and everything. And then following that up with a tree service, which would, they know how to do fuels reduction very well, but they mostly come in and they do limbing up and also removing usually two inches minus trees and other irregular brush in the mid-story level. So we're looking at around 406 and we have 409,000 and some change to do that for this fiscal year. So in summary, we're going to put these federal dollars to work lowering the danger of the fuel load in the properties the city is responsible for, with the goal of keeping goats chewing and chainsaws running continuously as long as the funding holds out. And I can take any questions.
Thank you, Terry, for this update. I've got to say, I am really excited about having goats in the city of Placerville. I think that's just going to be great. How quickly do they work, like per acre?
They usually, they usually set up in a, usually a one to two acre area. And they put usually two rows of fencing up. They put an electric fence and mostly that's to keep the animals out. And they can get through a couple of acres in about a day and a half to two days. And it depends on how many goats they're able to bring out. But I have worked in partnership with, when I was working for the park district in Chico, the city put them to work at Bidwell Park. And I don't know if anybody's been to Bidwell Park, but it's a 3,600 acre park that was gifted by the Bidwells to the city of Chico. And it's been a struggle for them to keep up. But they were able to put them in two acres at a time. And I think they were moving them every three days. And they were able to move through some very dense brush. So they move pretty quickly.
I think it would be cool to have goats as a kind of permanent maintenance fixture in Placerville.
Well, as
Yes, it would be so fun.
My wife wants to be the goat person.
This was a request, I hit Terry up with it when he came into town. And his wife was real cooperative, too, and giving a lot of information. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to meet, go out there and meet those goats when they come and I'm going to be in their cheering section. I really, really champion for this project and I'm really so happy that we are, and I agree with you, Kara. I think we ought to employ them permanently.
Yeah, we should have our own city flock. Herd, herd.
I like it.
Yeah.
Peaville goats.
We'll take care of the whole thing.
Goat milk, goat cheese. Yeah, I like it.
We'll sell the milk.
Quick question, why do we have property on Crestview?
That is a good question. Nick and I have looked at the property, but I'm not quite sure why we have that one odd lot out there.
Yeah, I've looked into, wondered that myself. Somehow that got dedicated to us way back. And we should try to get rid of it, but it's not worth anything. It's very steep.
Is it locked? Is that that, is that the one going down the hill?
Yeah, down to
Bennett's, Old Bennett's old house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Between there.
Jerry Bennett's old house.
Oh, that's right.
Familiar with that property.
Yeah. Very steep and not worth anything.
All right, thanks.
So just a liability, not?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? One other comment I'll make on this is I understand the need to prioritize these big lots first. And I think that that's the prudent way to do it. But I do think it is really important that we address all of the city lots, you know, in an expeditious manner. Just one for the safety, but also just to show our residents that, you know, we're asking them to spend money and do the vegetation management on their own properties. And I think we should be setting a good example with our properties.
But I think I'm going to interject, too, that the Fire Safety Council is working on this very thing. And for the smaller properties, there, I think there's help out there. You know, like Mark was talking about tonight, and services that could maybe through the senior citizens, through the veterans, through the Indian casino, what they're offering, the tribal. So I think there are some, you know, there's help out there.
Yeah, which is great.
Are you having to pay prevailing wages to the goats? Actually, that, I just thought of that question. But no, prevailing wages to the They're city employees, okay. No, to the, to the tree trimmers?
The tree contractors are used to working on those city wages, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So you know what, other questions or comments from the council? I will open this up to poll comment.
Sue, do you have a comment?
I am really happy to see us doing something for city properties and fuel reduction. When the last time I was at Goldbug Park, I was appalled at how, how much work needs to be done there and how overgrown it has become. Several, several years ago, it all got cleaned up and it was really nice. And now it's a disaster, which says to me and to all of us, if you don't maintain it, nature abhors the vacuum and it will grow back. So once you get these things into good shape, it's a lot easier to keep them in shape than to come back every 20 years and have a huge job to do. I found that to be true in my own one acre, is that if it gets weeded every year, if I do maintenance on it every year, it's not too bad. If it goes for two years, it's bad. And if it gets longer than that, it's horrendous. So let's keep this, keep this up. We may have ARPA funds this year to get us over the hump of getting it into shape. But then we need to keep it that way.
Thank you, Sue. All right. Item 16, upcoming items, tentatively scheduled for next meeting is Measure J report, Broadway sidewalks, REY Amendment six, special event policy, Hinktown Creek, Culver and parking lot restoration, and Placerville Economic Advisory Committee report.
It's going to be a long meeting.
There wasn't a whole lot of action on this one. Lots of discussion. It'll be all next, all next time.
You go.
So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:26. And we will go into closing.